Call this meeting as Tacoma Park City Council order. Report please call the role.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Snapper.
Here.
Okay, first up, I wanted to make sure that I announced that there's going to be an administrative function session at the end of this evening's meeting, so colleagues, don't get up and bolt out of here. And there are no changes to this evening's agenda, even though it sure looked like there were going to be, but there aren't. And upcoming meetings, reminder, next week, Monday, April 2nd is Ward Three Night, and we're going to have a presentation on the watershed improvement plan and work session items, including a discussion of sustainability contract procurement, a review of the strategic plan, and discussion of council recognition and honoring members of the Tacoma Park community. The following Monday, April 9th, is the presentation of the city manager's proposed FY13 budget and budget work session, and that kicks off budget season. Monday, the 16th, there's a public hearing on the budget, and the second public hearing on the budget and also the constant yield tax rate is Monday, April 20th. We're also scheduled for a couple Thursday evening budget work sessions, and that kind of takes us through April. The next thing we'll do is go to public comment period, if anybody has anything like to say that is not about our regular meeting agenda, at least the items that we'll comment on, so anything not on the agenda and anything on the consent agenda or the work session.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, your official peace delegate. Just wanted to remind everybody that although next Wednesday is, I mean, next Monday is going to be Ward Three Night, and I just wanted to let people know that the day after that, April 3rd, it's time to get out there and cast your ballot again on the primaries, presidential primaries. So don't forget, everybody out there, I hope you've registered to vote. This is the time to be a responsible adult. And all you Tacoma Parkers out there, I'd like to see you all out there showing how much you love your city by getting out there and voting. Yes, and I'd like to, I'd also like to thank Mike and the other people who spoke up yesterday on the war in, I mean, last week on the war in Afghanistan, because that was really nice to hear them the other day on the TV. And again, please, I implore the people to get out there and vote. Don't let the Republicans win this time at all. Don't even let the, remember, we've got to, it's not just the president that makes the decisions, it's also the Congress. President can't do nothing without help from the Congress, and the Congress can't do nothing without input from the voters. So that's what I mean, your ballot does count. People, I've been hearing people say their vote don't count. Their vote does count. It's a very important count. Every single vote counts. As you all know, that's how we've got such a good council in Tacoma Park. We've got to, we've got to carry that throughout the nation, and it's a good time to stand up and speak out what you feel by voting in the primary. Primary is just as important as any other election. Just cannot let that go. So please, anyone out there, please, make sure you register. I hope you already have, because it's a little too late for some of the absentee ballots unless you're in the hospital or laid up, very, very sick, you can get an emergency ballot. You can talk to your councilman about that if you haven't done it yet. So please, get out there and vote next Tuesday, April 3rd, because I'll be out there at the ballots. Be out there with my peace sign, speaking up for what I believe in, and I expect to see a lot of people out there this time. Please, come out and do the American duty. Vote. It's not that hard to do. Please, if I can do it in my condition, in a wheelchair or an oxygen, totally blind, amputee, broken back, you name it, granuloma, the list goes on and on, if I can do it, please, you can do it too. It's not that hard. So please, come out on the 3rd and register to vote. Tuesday, April 3rd. Vote, vote, vote.
Thank you. Is there somebody else who would like to comment?
Good evening. My name is Wolfgang Bruckner. I'm Elephant One of For Tulip Avenue, Tacoma Park, and mayor, city manager, and council members. I'm glad you'll admit to talk tonight. I'm representing a group which met informally for now since October, which we named seniors and those who care for them. And as such a group, I was invited to the Jewish Council on aging, of aging, because they were preparing for the villages in Tacoma Park, a grant, and this grant is going to the Department of Transportation, and they should ask for support, transportation of seniors in different parts of the county. Now, this meeting was a meeting of villagers, and I'd define first what villagers are. Villagers go out by a different name, aging at home. They're organizations which provide the basic services for seniors, allow them to stay home in their home, which can be a house or can be apartments. The grant application, and that's why I'm here, we don't have an organization called Villages in Tacoma Park, so I don't have a motherboard I can plug into. So I'm asking the council if you would support our participation in this grant. What is delivered to us is the grant will go to the Jewish Council, they will train drivers, they will indemnify them, they will pay for insurance, and they make this service possible. It's called a right share database, and we, in response, have certain obligations. First, we have the group who plans participation, and we do have a group of eight people who work on that. Then, another task is for us to recruit volunteers in our community, and these volunteers, okay, are supposed to participate in right share program. We are supposed to participate in four forums a year, which promote this right share program, and assist in marketing and outreach, and we should host community forums in our community as well. And then, of course, we think in the future, of our future transportation solutions for the seniors. Thank you. It's three minutes.
So is there anything that you need from us to support your participation?
What I need from you is a nod with a hat saying, "Go ahead and do it."
Yes.
Thank you.
So that entails, that entails sending the letter that's on your second page here on the city letterhead. And so far as city participation in the quarterly forums and so on, I would be happy to be a city representative there along with any other council members who would wish to participate as well.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks for bringing this to our attention. Anybody else who'd like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to council comments. Council member Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Two announcements, and I would be remiss if I didn't, if I wasn't the third person to say that next week, April 2nd, is Ward Three Night. So be here, all you Ward Threes, be here, and anybody else who wants to come, at 7:00 for light refreshments, and then 7:30, the games begin. Oh, no, that's the meeting that begins. And you can just speak about anything you'd like to, only the really nice things are what will be most important. Second thing, freeze alert tonight. I know, I know, it's been 80 degrees, it's supposed to freeze tonight, so if anybody out there moved their subtropicals outside, either move them back in or wrap them in a blanket, because it's not, it's not a good night for a subtropical plant to be outside. So tonight, I can hit Gold Stars and the Junction Tour almost at the same time. Gold Stars go to Bobby Kitner, and a Ward Three resident, by the way, and Old Tacoma Business Association headed by Roz Grigsby. They get Gold Stars, as does everybody else who worked on the Third Annual Art Hop. There are over 35 stores and 35 artists participating and involved, and they had a really great meet the artists reception at the Landis Construction Building in Tacoma, DC. And what was really remarkable in the face of nasty weather, things were changed quickly and efficiently on Saturday. What was most refreshing was the inclusion this year of some short talks, which were supposed to be at Historic Tacoma, but ended up at the Co-op in their community room. More Gold Stars to all the planners, we're even creating such talks, so more people could come to a junction to see exactly what goes on there. Each of the talks were very well, they were all very well attended. It's raining Gold Stars on the Tacoma, Old Tacoma Business Association for this very innovative way to continue to open our fair city, not only to the residents, but to all the visitors as well. We had a really good time at the Co-op. I think I probably talked to almost every resident in Tacoma Park in the two days I was there, as you may be able to hear from my voice. Now, the Co-op is a whole different conversation, because it really is at the anchor store for the Junction. It's a place where almost anybody passing through on a bus, in a car, walking, on a bicycle, on a skateboard, or any other mode of transportation stops by to either to purchase something organic, any organic kind of product. The building is, it used to house a Safeway, that was way back in, when I moved to Tacoma Park, and they, the Safeway gave me my first kitten in 1948. The building went unoccupied for a while and then became Turner Electric for many years, and now it houses our very own hometown organic and gluten-free grocery store. I can't say enough about the fabulous staff, including the member outreach director, Sherry Collins. They're willing to show two artists this weekend, and graciously hosted the reception for both of them, and also had the group discussions on very short notice in their community room. There are a lot of people who didn't even know the Co-op had a community room, but they do. I would like to thank, I would like to say that all of you should stop by and see what the store has to offer, but like I said before, I think I talked to almost every one of you this past weekend. Great and gracious job by the Co-op and Art Hop, and huge gobs of Gold Stars to both of them. It was a really, really wonderful way to show off Tacoma Park and all the artists that we have here. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I'll add to what Councilmember Daniels Cohen had to say, that the Old Tacoma Business Association is looking to recruit a new executive director, so if you're interested in the position, well, I don't have the contact information offhand, but I'd be happy to provide anyone with that contact information. I wanted, I had some inquiries from community members about the status of the plan development at 231-235 Carroll Street Northwest in the District of Columbia, that is on Carroll between Maple and Cedar Avenues. There's a big hole in the ground there now. That project has been in various states of non-development for something, I would guess around six years. Since I had a number of inquiries, I thought I'd mention what I know about the status, which is that the District Department of the Environment has certified the cleanup as having been successful. There used to be two filling stations at that site with a number of underground fuel storage tanks, and so there was remediation undertaken, and that's completed. But the developer and architect want to undertake some changes to the design, in particular along the roof line. The Advisory Neighborhood Commission for that area in the District of Columbia finds that those changes are substantial, and on February 27th requested that there be a public hearing about that, and that's pending so far as I know. I would not expect development therefore to start for at least some months to come, and then completion would be probably a couple of years away. There is one thing I was hoping the council could do now, which is to provide direction to the city clerk about the Committee on the Environment and the Safe Roadways Committee. We discussed retaining those two committees at a recent council meeting, and it would be good to start recruiting for new members and figure out if we need to do anything special associated with that. We do have a variety of environmental initiatives that the city has on its table, on its plate right now, as well as needs for maybe some more formal participation of residents in evaluating traffic, calming, and pedestrian safety and other types of measures. So the question I have, are we ready to give the city clerk direction to start recruiting for those committees?
Let me just check with the clerk, was there anything that was, was an obstacle to that from your end?
I had wondered if the council wanted to review the charge of the two committees and ensure that it was what you had in mind for continuing. So I think that's what I was waiting for.
That sounds like a good idea, and sounds like something we could do.
Schedule on a work session?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be, okay, it would be good to get that on the schedule. I know, of course, we're going to budget season and so on. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
A couple things tonight. This Sunday morning, I had the opportunity to participate in a 5K race that was put on by an organization, the race was downtown on Pennsylvania Avenue, by an organization that is encouraging people to not overlook the health requirement of getting colonoscopies in order to prevent colon cancer. And as some may know, Nancy and I lost our daughter to colon cancer six months ago, just about, and that was because under current medical guidelines, people don't normally get, start getting colonoscopies until they are 50 years old or older, and of course, her body didn't know that, and so it started developing cancer when she was, well, first discovered some symptoms when she was about 43. And we don't really know when it might have started. And she died when she was 46. So of course, she didn't get a colonoscopy until it was there to discover how much of a cancer she actually had. So that's history, but it is important for us to think about, all of us, regardless of whatever age, to be suspicious of the possibility of cancer, no matter how old you are, but definitely post-50, to make sure you follow up on that and do it. It's, it's important. It's the second, colon cancer is the secondly, most fatal of all cancers after, I think it is after breast cancer, or lung cancer, it's one of those. So I had the occasion to walk with my wife and our two daughters in this 5K race, they call it a race. We walked, and one reason is that Nancy had fallen and dislocated her wrist, so she had a nice big cast on her arm in a sling. She wasn't about to go jogging anywhere, seeing as that she's also due for back surgery in a few weeks. So we had a nice long three point something mile walk, and we ended up becoming next to the next to the last people to finish, to cross the finish line. The people who took the 5K race seriously finished it in about 16 or 17 minutes. We took an hour longer than that, and we were proud to finish, and it was a lot of fun. It was a little chilly and damp. And there was about 3,000 people that turned out for this, this event. So it might be something that a year from now, you may want to think about joining and participating in. The second thing I wanted to bring up is, last week during the public comment period, we had occasion here to listen to Burn Kelly, I think it was John Newcomb, who are residents of Pine Crest, I think that's the area in Ward Three, about their concerns, as well as some representing those of others' concerns, about their uncertainty and confusion about the enforcement of the city's code with regard to vehicles on, commercial vehicles on streets, what defines a commercial vehicle, and how is it, when is it the law being enforced, which I understand is generally tends to be enforced on a complaint basis, and not as, not a routine basis like you would with, say, parking meters or something like that. In my own ward, I've had a number of constituents who have work vans for businesses that they operate out of their house, small box trucks and that sort of thing, who find themselves here sort of periodically and erratically ticketed. And sometimes these trucks seem to be a nuisance, and other times they are not a nuisance. But it does seem to me, from everything I've learned from talking to the police chief, that, and this is not his recommendation at all, this is my comment, that I think that the, this part of the city code needs to be more tightly defined, and also I think, as was suggested by the speakers last week, there needs to be some remedy. So we have an awful lot of home-based businesses that do use trucks of varying size, and they, if they cannot park where they would normally like to park, there has to be, we ought to think seriously about a reasonable arrangement by which it would be legal for them to park within the city limits of our city, and not just sort of say, well, you just can't park your truck here, period, and you're going to get a ticket, and you're going to keep getting tickets until you get rid of your truck and make it disappear. It's easy for us to say, but it creates sometimes an inordinate hardship on people who are good, solid taxpayers. And so I'd like us as the city council to schedule a time in the not-too-distant future, but understanding we have to give priority to budget and budget season, that we look at this part of our city code and see what we can do to make it a more equitable thing, as also, also a more predictable law, because laws that are unpredictable are not very popular, and ones that are predictable and people understand clearly what the rules are, and what, when they're violating the rules and when they're not, are laws that tend to get a lot of respect. So that would be my, my request.
Okay. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would say I support recruiting members for the two committees that were mentioned earlier by Councilmember Grimes, and to the extent that we want to do so, I'm happy to work with other council members to try to draft some potential language, which might help make our work session to be more productive, so we could actually react to something. I'm equally happy for somebody else to do that, but just thought I'd throw my name out there as being willing to look at something. On the issue of the parking code and consistency, I similarly support putting an agenda item in place somewhere in the future on that issue. On a couple of different issues, first, a question for the city manager. The Aspen Hills Apartments renovations, I think, are ongoing, and originally had a scheduled completion date of May. I was out at the site this evening, and I'm guessing that May is not going to be the completion date, so maybe we could just follow up with, city staff could follow up with the company to find out what the schedule is there on completion. The reason I was out there was because a resident from the neighborhood had expressed concern, because kids are, to get to a bus stop at the bottom of Aspen, kids are walking along Sligo Creek Parkway from Cherry to Aspen, and Sligo Creek Parkway, as many people know, doesn't have a sidewalk or any other pedestrian access, so they were, they were expressing concern that the, I think, public right-of-way is currently closed off where that construction site goes through, and it is quite closed off. It might also be worthwhile having the arborist just pay a visit to the site and look at the erosion that seems to be going on around the boundaries of it, in some cases quite significantly, and significant excavation as well of what looks like new construction, which may have been part of the plan, I just wasn't aware of it when I looked through the documents. Two other issues, the, now that it's spring, except for today, I wanted to remind people that under city policy, residents can get through the cooperation of their neighbors, permission to close off streets for neighborhood play events, as Pat Rumbaut would like to have, or for block parties and other events in the summer that help bring our communities together. And then finally, this weekend, by email, myself and other council members, we're discussing money available for stormwater-related work and Chesapeake Bay water quality-related work from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and I'll enter some comments I put together for the record at the next meeting agenda, but that's an area where I just wanted to encourage us to continue to talk, because there's a significant amount of money available that, to a significant respect, could pay for things that we're already doing with, with city money. So whereas right now, our residents are paying the majority, or in many years, all of the burden of doing bio-retention projects, stormwater retrofits, money from this mostly federal source could be used to supplement that money. So we would either be able to do more projects, or we'd be able to do projects that don't all sort of fall on our backs. The other thing that, that I would be very interested in us doing is trying to do some additional work. So one area that the city is not traditionally involved itself is restoration of lands to benefit water quality on private lands, and that's something that potentially we could do, and we could do with a partner. It doesn't have to be that the city is leading all those projects. And then the final piece is that on a monthly basis, they literally approve grants every month to have contractors help municipalities plan and figure out what they want to do. So we could literally ask for 20, 30, 40, $50,000 worth of assistance, not money, but we'd get assistance. We would be able to pick a contractor from their list of approved contractors, and that contractor would then be able to work with city staff, a committee on the environment, residents, local businesses, to talk about some of the options and bring in the expertise they have from working throughout the Chesapeake Bay. And so to me, that's almost the expressing concern that the, I think, public right-of-way is currently closed off, where that construction site goes through, and it is quite closed off. It might also be worthwhile having the arborist just pay a visit to the site and look at the erosion that seems to be going on around the boundaries of it, in some cases, quite significantly, and significant excavation as well of what looks like new construction, which may have been part of the plan, I just wasn't aware of it when I looked through the documents. Two other issues, the, now that it's spring, except for today, I wanted to remind people that, under city policy, residents can get, through the cooperation of their neighbors, permission to close off streets for neighborhood play events, as Pat Rumbaut would like to have, or for block parties and other events in the summer that help bring our communities together. And then finally, this weekend, by email, myself and other council members, we're discussing money available for stormwater-related work and Chesapeake Bay water quality-related work from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and I'll enter some comments I put together for the record at a, at the next meeting agenda, but that's an area where I just wanted to encourage us to continue to talk, because there's a significant amount of money available that, to a significant respect, could pay for things that we're already doing with, with city money. So whereas right now, our residents are paying the majority, or in many years, all of the burden of doing bio-retention projects, stormwater retrofits, money from this mostly federal source could be used to supplement that money, so it would, we would either be able to do more projects, or we'd be able to do projects that don't all sort of fall on our backs. The other thing that, that I would be very interested in us doing is trying to do some additional work. So, one area that the city is not traditionally involved itself is restoration of lands to benefit water quality on private lands, and that's something that potentially we could do, and we could do with a partner. It doesn't have to be that the city is leading all those projects. And then the final piece is that, on a monthly basis, they literally approve grants every month to have contractors help municipalities plan and figure out what they want to do. So we could literally ask for 20, 30, 40, $50,000 worth of assistance, not money, but we'd get assistance. We would be able to pick a contractor from their list of approved contractors, and that contractor would then be able to work with city staff, a committee on the environment, residents, local businesses, to talk about some of the options and bring in the expertise they have from working throughout the Chesapeake Bay. And so, to me, that's almost the, that's the lowest-hanging fruit of all of it. It's essentially free, a free consultant, and it just doesn't seem to me that we have much to lose there. In fact, I think we, we have a lot to gain, if only for knowing just how advanced our current stormwater work is, and, and how we could maybe supplement it. Thank you.
Councilmember Seaman.
Councilmember Schultz, you said you had a follow-up? All right, you want me to go first? Yeah. One thing I forgot to add into my remarks was that I was pleased to announce that construction of sidewalks, new sidewalks, installation of new sidewalks, literally began a week ago in Ward 6, up in the very northern corner of the city, near, well, it's up, it's up on Kennewick and Ann Street and Lockney and that block up there, which is, if you're not, if you're not familiar with that area, is where, if you remember where the Safeway grocery store used to be, it's at the residential community just to the back of where that grocery store was, or there's another one there. So, and the sidewalks, I invite people to come look at the new sidewalks, since it's been such a controversial matter for such a long time, I think people would be interested, and that's why I'm mentioning it now, to come look at what is being built, because in some places, we have just a conventional sidewalk, where they're building, laying a new sidewalk, where there didn't used to be any. They're, of course, repairing and putting in new driveway aprons, they're repairing steps, or something like that, that are being disturbed, but, and, but in one place, there's an area where the sidewalk literally bumps right out into the street, which narrows the street, because there's a very large tree there, and to cut it into the, make it in a straight line would obviously damage the roots of this tree. So they just bowed the sidewalk out into the street. And another area, right at the corner of Kirkland and Kennewick, where there's a circle, a traffic circle, there is a tree that has high roots, and instead of pouring concrete, they're laying brickwork, or have laid brickwork, to continue the sidewalk. And so there's an uninterrupted masonry surface, but it's, it's brick, that obviously is not going to do damage to, to the roots like poured concrete could. And that brick sidewalk continues on for a way to work its way around some roots of other trees. So I, I think it's an exciting project. I'm really, really pleased that we're getting sidewalks built in this community, because the residents, for the most part, have, have wanted them for quite some time. And I want to extend my thanks to the Department of Public Works for their efforts in this regard. Thanks.
And I've got a couple of things I wanted to mention. I wanted to add my thanks to all the folks who put Art Hop on. We enjoyed spending part of one day doing that. I was, I helped host and talk with another delegation from China last week. This was a group from Sichuan province, and they were here to talk about, again, emergency preparedness, and Captain Corsi and I spent about an hour and a half with them, talking about a number of things. And at the end of it, they left a present for the city, and I just want to let people know that, nice, nice bag, and a folder with some, with a brocade of a panda. So if anybody wants to take a look at it, and then we'll put it somewhere. No, got to stay here. Also wanted to mention that Arbor Day is coming up on April 21st, that's a Saturday, and the city celebration will be from 10 to 2 at the library. We also received notification that the, concerning the hospital certificate of need process, that a new hearing examiner has been named, and my sense is that that process will continue for some time. The new hearing examiner said that she's going to read all of the record, and my understanding is that the, the record in this case is about seven feet tall, and so just to go through that documentation is going to take some time, so nobody should assume that there's going to be any quick resolution to the certificate of need process for the hospital either moving or staying. And one other thing I wanted to mention was that, at the request of some residents last week, I was made aware of a letter that's circulating from mayors all around the country, and at this point, I'm one of 55 who signed it, and the letter is going to EPA Administrator Jackson, and it shows support for the long overdue rules controlling mercury pollution and other dangerous air pollutants. And I was happy to sign that, and there's signatures from mayors of much smaller towns and places like New York and Boston and Los Angeles, so that letter's going to the EPA administrator probably early next week. And that's it for council comments. We don't have any minutes to approve. Is there any legislative update?
That's not true.
No? Where? Are there? I didn't get any. No, there's no minutes. No.
February 13th, we did that one already?
Mm-hmm.
It was last week.
You're a week behind.
I'm, I'm a week behind. I picked up your pack up quick. I did pick up my pack up. Nothing in there?
It just hitched a ride.
It did.
Any legislative update?
Yeah, I'll just combine that with my report, if I may. Deputy City Manager talked to Michelle Douglas of Public Policy Partners earlier today, and Suzanne asked if I would just share this information, some of which I think is probably very well-known to the council just from reading the newspaper. Obviously, the House and Senate have very different budget plans. The budget is supposed to be adopted by April 2nd, but will probably be extended this year. Obviously, there's lots of debate about raising revenues in very different versions, and very different thoughts on the part of the Senate and the House, mostly centering around income taxes. Michelle Douglas's assessment has said it is unlikely to, that we will see any extra highway user revenues this year over the base amount, but as she put it on the good side, there's not any discussion about rating the Transportation Trust Fund. If there is agreement, more on the revenue proposal of the Senate, it is possible that we might get some extra highway user revenue, but I think this will come down to the wire as it did last year. Suzanne asked me to share with you that the city's alcoholic beverage bill is not facing any difficulties. There is a hearing Wednesday that she didn't feel we needed to attend. And then, as I mentioned last week, the GO Committee will be meeting on April 19th to talk about tax duplication issues. Did want to share with the council that I had two meetings this morning, one with Roger Berliner's aide, Lou DeVideo, to talk about our police payment and our concerns about the termination of negotiations on the part of the county executive, as, and also met with Valerie Irvin's aide, and I'll be meeting with Nancy Navarro's aide next week. So I think this is probably the area where we need to put the biggest push on what we plan to touch base in one way or another with all the members of the county council or their aides on this issue. We did give some information out to Mr. DeVideo and Mr. Romer this morning, and I'll share that with the council later this week.
Okay, and I can add that on the, on the state budget and the possibility of there being any additional highway user revenues, there's a difference of $3 million between what the Senate included and what the House included, and I will be part of a meeting with the House Speaker tomorrow afternoon to try and make sure that the House adds highway user revenues back in the discussions.
That's $3 million statewide?
That's an addition.
It's not $3 million for Tacoma Park?
No, no.
That would be lovely, but...
I think, I think, at this point, I think, I think the, the amount that they both have in is the 10 million, and they're, the Senate put an additional $3 million in, but the House didn't. So, and the 10 million is the level that things were at last year, so the anticipation is that it'll be the same as last year, unless it's an additional $3 million distributed around the state. And we'll know more about that tomorrow. Oh, and one other thing, just to alert folks, the, we, at this point, we have a conflict between the budget work session on April 19th and the Montgomery chapter of MML, and at this, at this point, I'm trying to move the chapter meeting to a different date, and I'll keep you posted, but that may be a different date. Okay, I think we're all finished with all of that preliminary stuff, so we'll go to the presentation from the Board of Elections. Welcome.
Forgot my sunglasses. Thank you. Good evening.
Oh, we got, we got extras up here.
Good evening, I'm Anne Sargent, Chair of the City of Tacoma Park Board of Elections. I'm joined tonight by my co-board members, April Kissel, Marilyn Abbott, and Jim Roberts over there on the side there, and I've invited them to chime in if I forget anything, because I've been out of the country for three weeks, and I could forget something, so...
Okay, and if that podium's too tall, hit the button and lower it.
Really?
Yep.
On the left?
Left front there? There you go.
Okay, many of you are familiar with the ScanTegrity system that we used in the last election cycle, the 2009 election, but for people who aren't, ScanTegrity is a voter-verifiable optical scan system, where the ballots are printed with a special reactive ink, and it's kind of like those yes-and-no coloring books, where you pass the special marker over it, and, and instead of a picture being revealed, a number is revealed, and people, voters can copy that code down along with their ballot number, and then go home and check to see if their ballot was counted as they cast it. It's completely confidential, the codes are unique to each ballot, and only the computer knows, and even that isn't, there's a, a lot of robust encryption that I know nothing about, I just know it's there. We have auditors to make sure it is in fact there as well. So, we have a 2008 memorandum of understanding that allows us to use the system in perpetuity from the developers of the system, and we need help to do that, but so far, we have that help, and it's been working so far. We have, we identified some improvements from last year, that, from 2009, that we incorporated in 2011, and we're continuing to improve there. So, just so you know, we're, we're historic. We are, we have the only voter-verifiable optical scan system that's in use in any municipality that we're aware of, and that includes the ScanTegrity folks, and they're pretty aware of what's going on. So, our election in 2009 was in fact historic, it was the first time it was ever used in a municipality, and then 2011 was the second time. So we're, we're special, and we're also a test subject for the, the research that the academics are doing. So, this time, we applied with, uh-oh, sorry, I have to look, the Voting Systems Institute, which is ScanTegrity's new name, we applied for a $25,000 grant from the Election Assistance Commission, Commission, and won that, and as you see in paragraph 2 there, it's Voting System Pre-Election Logic and Accuracy Testing and Post-Election Audit Initiative. So they want to encourage new and improved ways of conducting elections, and this, these series of small grants were specifically for that. So we won, and that was great, that helped us get a lot done, and I'm not going to go into the details there. I can get them for you if you're interested, just let me know. And, anyway, the city, the city had to be the awardee of the grant, but we're working with the VSI stuff, the VSI folks, to execute the planned activities. So, election preparations, we did identify from 2009 a number of areas for improvement, particularly with regard to efficiency and usability, and they were, they were, they were really good to work with. We met a, a number of times, and they were very active in suggesting possible solutions and considering our ideas, and that they've, they've, there's been some changes in the group. It was a consortium of academic institutions, and not, it's academic, so people get their PhDs and move on, or students change schools or something like that, but it, it has worked well for us. The one thing that was different this year was the, there was a professor at George Washington University who was kind of the glue who held the whole operation together. She was on sabbatical this year. She came back from the election, thank goodness, but she, she was missed. It, it's not that there were problems, it's just that that glue was not there the way it was the last time. But she'll be back. So, the Voting Systems Institute folks identified three election auditors. They're Roberto Araho, Neil McBurnett, and Lily Cooney. Dr. Cooney had to withdraw due to unforeseen circumstances, but everybody else proceeded as planned, and then we had a software security reviewer, I think that was part of our arrangement with the grant, named Marco Remili. Appendix B talks about the details of that, and if you want further details, I can get you that information as well. At the nominating caucus, we were delighted to discover that we had contested races, because there's, there's a lot of talk about what brings out the vote in elections, but really what it is, is a contested race. And we had several of them, so that was very exciting. We have decided not to put a lot of energy into voter registration, because when we've tried to do it, it turns out that nearly everybody who wants to be registered apparently is already registered. We did a table at, I think it was the, was it the Street Festival, Jesse, two times ago?
Yes, and the Folk Festival.
And the Folk Festival, and people come up who live in another jurisdiction, or we say, you know, if they look interested, we say, hey, would you like to register to vote? And they say, I already am, or, so it's, it's pretty much, it seems like everybody who wants to be registered is, or there are other opportunities for people to register. So we are putting less energy into that than we used to, and someone can always come in and register at the city clerk's office at any time. We have a full complement on the Board of Elections, I'm pleased to report. We were down a couple people for a while, but now we have the full complement of seven people. Beverly Omenako resigned due to health concerns, but she did come help us at the election, and I personally was really happy, she was well enough to join us for a day, anyway. That was very heartening for me. So we had a couple of meetings. Jesse and I met with Philip Zagorski and Christian Bull from the Norwegian Ministry of Local Government and Regional Development in December, and he is Assistant Project Manager of their e-voting project, that they're, it's a pilot project that they have going. And then Rick Karbach from VSI and I participated in teleconference with the Election Verification Network in January. From what we learned in the election, the 2009 election, we updated our election official manual, so people would be better prepared, and one thing, we, we developed the scripts more fully, and one thing we learned from the last time was that we really need to require that everybody comes the night before, because in 2009, a few of us, I think three of us, were there for a long time that night, so now everyone must attend, just like the regular county elections. And we rely pretty heavily on county processes, and we also, the county is gracious enough to let us use their equipment, which is a huge help to us, and that, the electronic poll books and some other stuff, and also forms. So, for this election, we will, the, we had been using the Azalea Room, and it's pretty crowded in there when everybody comes to vote. We were expecting a higher turnout because we had contested races, so we thought we would try using the Azalea Room and the auditorium. And that, it was more space to vote in, it was a little confusing for some people, because there wasn't always somebody there to say, you have to make that sort of U-turn from the atrium area to come in here. That's a fixable problem. We identified also the little ledge where you come, the little strip where you come into this room as a, it was a point of difficulty for strollers and wheelchairs, but that's probably something that can be fixed in the longer term. And, sorry, Pat. So we, so that's something for the future that we could work on. And it did work reasonably well to have two rooms, there was a lot more space for people to vote. And it does take people more time to vote using the ScanTegrity system, and particularly since it's in combination with instant runoff voting. There are two separate things that both require explanation, and many people, we had an official script, but people over the course of the day improved that script to fit their needs, and, like, don't bother people with explaining how to check your vote online if they clearly are not interested in doing that, and there are a few terms that, that really resonate with people. For instance, I found that anybody who looks like they either have or had children recently, if you say, the markers work like in the yes-and-no coloring books, they get it right away. Now, for people who haven't had children, it doesn't work so well, but there are a few key phrases that people have come up with that, we're, we're just continually fine-tuning our scripts, and that's to the better, I think. So, we do have some areas for improvement. Oh, I, I need to note also that enough voters verified their votes online to ensure that the system is, it's a statistically significant number, so we can be confident that the encryption was robust, enough people checked it to make sure that enough checks were performed. And people are, you know, there, there are the people who have no interest whatsoever, and the people who are kind of into it, because it's a techie kind of thing. It's not really that techie, but people just like that about it. And we have a, a large component of our population who enjoys checking up on stuff like that. I think we have pretty high confidence in, in the election process here. I don't think anybody's thinking that there's any kind of fraud going on... anybody's thinking that there's any kind of fraud going on at all, I mean, I've never heard any complaints about it, I've never even heard any of my friends come up to me and say, "Hey, Ann," you know, I've heard that da-da-da-da, I just, it might be there, but I've never heard anything about it, and I think people just like to check. So, we did identify some areas for improvement from the 2011 election, which is that usability could be a little better, and we're continually working on that. And we think, we're thinking now that the instructions really need to be delivered a bit at a time when you need that bit. Don't try to load up people all at once, like, "You do this, you do this, you do this." It's like, "Now you do this, and they do it, and now you do this, and they do it." So, just breaking it into smaller pieces, we think will help. Instant runoff voting is still a point of confusion. One person hit on the phrase "your backup vote," and that might be a really, a real winner. That seemed to, once we started using that, people seemed to get it a lot better, so we'll be trying that. And then, there's a cadre of Russian speakers who live in, over, further down Maple Street, or maybe in the Franklin Apartments, I'm not sure where they live, but they're elderly Russian voters. If anybody knows somebody who speaks Russian, who would, could, is willing to be an election judge, we'd love to have a Russian speaker.
I can help you with that problem.
Thank you.
Not that I speak it, but I can find somebody for you.
I figure if you had already, you would have been on it, but.
Do election judges speak Tacoma Park residents?
Yes, they have to be registered voters in Tacoma Park. Well, no, that's not true, we had, they have to be registered voters.
In Maryland, a few years ago, we expanded it because we were afraid we weren't going to have enough, so we expanded it into all of Montgomery County.
I have a friend whose parents are among the population that you're mentioning now, who could possibly be.
And does your friend speak Russian?
Yeah.
Hmm, well, yes, we could, so we could certainly use a Russian speaker. It's never a problem for us to find Spanish speakers, and that's the most common language that people need help with. There are a few people who speak Creole, and there's usually somebody around who speaks enough French to get the information across, but the Russian is, it's a little hard to find, so if you Terry or you Seth can help out with that, that'd be fabulous. And when it comes to improving usability, there's a local facilitator who's willing to essentially donate some of her time to help with that, and that's, once we get that act together, we will take advantage of that. So, what we're currently doing is, we're going to tweak the work plan, we're working on some opportunities for, we're calling them outreach opportunities, but we think the information that we have for both voters and potential candidates could be a little clearer, like what you need to do to be a candidate. There've been a couple of times where someone seems to want to run for office but is not familiar with everything you need to do and have to be a candidate, so we want to make it easier for people to do that if they want, and make it easy for them to get the information they need. And then we will probably go ahead with voter registration training for new board members, we'll see how that plays out. It's easy enough to learn, so it's, and it's not, it's easy to get the materials to do it. We're going to explore same-day registration, that would probably complicate Jesse's life considerably, but we're going to explore the possibility there. And one thing that's come up is, one question that frequently gets asked is, "Why do we need to rank our choices if there's only one person running for office?" So, we want to explore whether instant runoff voting is always needed in all circumstances, and then if we have a contested race, could we do something, like do instant runoff voting for one race and not the others? Would that confuse people even more? So, we're going to investigate that. And finally, we're going to look at early voting and how we would staff that. The county does it, and they have more resources than we do, but there may be a way we could offer it here if people on the Board of Elections, or just people who are willing to serve as, I guess you'd still call them election judges, would be willing to sit here in the city offices so people could come in, say, the Saturday before, and vote. So, we'll explore that possibility. So, that's most of what I had to say tonight. If they have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I've got a quick question on the IRV when there's, when it's not a contested race. How would people vote for their second choice when there's nobody, unless it's a write-in?
There's a write-in.
But that requires explanation?
I'm afraid it does.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz.
I think I want you to get lots of gold stars for your efforts towards ingenuity and trying to figure out new and better ways of doing something, which, for something that is as prosaic as, in America at least, as it should be prosaic, as casting a ballot. But I do have some questions, that things concern me, and one of them jumps right out at me is that we, if we are still, after this many, however many years it's been, the only municipality in the United States that's doing this optical, I guess you call it, voting, whatever it's called, what is the point of our doing this? Because, and it's not like we're, as citizens, particularly concerned about the integrity of our vote, voting process here, and so, you know, it's not like we're worried about corruption or ballot box stuffing, let's, like they say they do in Russia. But if this process isn't, if we're being used as a guinea pig by academics, it may be interesting to them, but why isn't any other municipality or county in the United States of America picking up on this? Because, to my way of thinking, we're, using the ScanTegrit system is a lot more complicated than filling, getting a piece of paper and putting a check mark in a box, and just putting it in a box and having somebody else check off their name, has been the historic way of voting for centuries in this country. I mean, if I thought that Tacoma Park was being used as an experiment so that this system could be proliferated through various communities in the United States or abroad, where it would make a difference, then I would say, "Hey, that's great, we're doing something for our society," but it doesn't seem like it's being used anywhere else.
Well, I can tell you that, just so you know, we identified them. When we were looking for, the last time we were looking for another election vendor, we narrowed it down to a few choices, and the ScanTegrit group seemed to have a most compri, it seemed like they were the ones who could actually execute an election. We talked to another vendor where they had some interesting ideas, but when it came down to practical terms, we had our doubts. So, we chose them, and I have to say, it was also attractive that it was available at no cost to us even the first time, and it was sort of the trade for us being the test subject. We knew we were going to be a test subject. Now, to address the question of complication, yes, it is in fact more complicated to use the ScanTegrit process as well as instant runoff voting. People can vote without paying any attention to the fact that it's ScanTegrit at all. You fill in the ovals, and the number appears, but you can ignore it, you can just feed it in through the scanner, and that's the end of it. So, you don't have to do that part, but to explain that, to offer people the option, does make it somewhat more complicated. And as far as, is this, you know, I like to tell myself we're leading the way, but your point that other municipalities, as far as we know, haven't adopted it yet, is well taken, and to be perfectly honest, we have done zero marketing to other municipalities. We just are really focused on getting our own election done, and I don't know if the Voting Systems Institute has been promoting it.
Yeah, I don't see it should be ever our job to be marketing somebody else's system to anybody. The people that run our own ScanTegrit should be the ones that would want to do that. I would, but let me move on to another question, and that is, I guess let me just say that I found the system complicated, and, you know, I'm an active member of our city and vote all the time and all of that, and I found it confusing, and it just seemed multifaceted, and it seemed like it was a fairly slow process, and, but that's just one person. I'm sure you've gotten feedback from many, many other people who might be, say, just the opposite as I do. I'm concerned, let me ask, that we need to have people who speak foreign languages here to help people vote, and so my question is, is if we were just using an ordinary conventional voting process, would we be needing people in here who were Russian translators or French Creole translators?
I think we would, because there are other kinds of questions that come up, even without ScanTegrit, and we have instant runoff voting already anyway, so we'd need them.
Okay.
Or we welcome them, let's put it that way.
Well, that's fine, I just don't want it to, I mean, the important thing is that we conduct elections that are easy for people to get to and to do and get it done as quickly so that they're not delayed, because anything that adds to delay or complication inherently is going to discourage people from voting, just is, whether we like it or to imagine that or not.
We do want to make it easy for people to get in and out, and one of the ideas we're, it's just an idea at this point, but an express lane is an idea that we've thought about, where, "Don't want to check? Do it this way, and it will be quicker for people." But we have to, we don't want to deprive everybody, anybody of the opportunity to check, so we have to figure out how that would work exactly.
Okay, well, see, that's what your group is doing excellently at, is trying to figure out better ways to do things, always. I'm a little uncomfortable with the thought that all the people in the city who wanted to want to register have been registered because of the empirical evidence that when you've tried to find new people to register, they haven't showed up. I just, this just doesn't sound to me to make sense. I think that, knowing so many constituents that I do that never come out to meetings, are very hard to get them to even answer their doorbell when you knock on their doors because of language barriers or whatever else keeps people from answering and coming out and having a conversation, and plus the fact there's an enormous amount of turnover of residents in this city, English-speaking people, not to mention all the foreign people who come here who speak so many different languages. I think that registration, I don't know, I'm not an expert, and you are, because you've been trying to do this for a long time, so anything you say will be good for me to hear, but I just think registration has to be something that's constantly pushed, and innovative ways tried, as innovatively as we're trying to figure out how to magically allow people to check their votes. I think we ought to be also trying to figure magically how we can get people registered, and any ideas that you have in that realm, I think, would be extremely valuable, not, I don't want to hear them tonight, but I think it's just as important as the actual vote.
If I could offer one word of reassurance here, a lot of people, when they, your point about non-English speakers is well taken, there's a lot of turnover in that population, and we find that we, that the list of registered voters, for instance, non-citizen voters has, it quickly gets outdated because people move away and there's a lot of turnover there, but in terms of what I'll call, well, it's regular citizen voters, many people update their voter registration when they move to Tacoma Park through the Department of Motor Vehicles. So, there are ways out there, and we do, in advance of every election, we do send out publicity materials that explain when you can, like, you need to register to vote by date X, and that it is available at various locations, so all is not lost. I do agree about the non-citizen voters especially, that we could do more there.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, as a city council member who's trying to get people to communicate to me so that I can hear their concerns and their complaints and what they're frustrated about, I beg people to do this, and they sort of think, "What's the matter? Why do you want me to complain to you?" And I tell them, "Well, if you don't tell me what's on your mind, how am I ever going to know? I can't read your mind," and it's so hard to get people to understand that it's, this is what we want to have happen in our communities. So, I know that reg, getting people to register and understand, I don't know, that they should do it and can do it and all that other stuff, or that it matters.
You know, I'd like to have an individual chat with you sometime about ideas, or maybe you'd want to chat with Jose Zambrana, who's on the Board of Elections and in your ward.
Well, you'll be sorry, you'll get me chatting, I won't stop.
[laughing]
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, thank you, Ann, for the presentation. First, I comment, I think that the difference in Tacoma Park, we have the voter-verified optical scanning system.
Yes.
Is first in the country, but optical scanning systems are becoming more and more common.
Yeah, optical scan is used in many, many places. It's the voter-verifiable part that's unique to us.
And the optical scanning system is still pretty complicated, so.
Well, in theory, with an optical scan, you fill in your ballot, and you put it in the scanner, and the bell rings, or there's some indication to let you know that it would, there's a beep or something, and there's some indication to let you know it's scanned, and then you go on your merry way. That's the simplest case.
And the added step that we have is writing down the number.
Right, that's correct.
But other than that, the rest of the system, in Florida, it was gone to optical scanning statewide. My understanding is there, it's everything but writing down the number that they have in place, but I.
It can be very simple, yeah, and I actually was just on vacation with a friend who is an election official in New Mexico, and there, you stand and you, they want you to stand there and watch the counter advance, which was a new thing to me, but there you go, each state does it differently.
Yeah, fair enough. I would comment too on the voter registration. I'd love to see ways to make it easier to get more people to register, in particular with non-citizen voters. If there are any things we can do to create forms, forms in different languages, that make it easier for people to figure out how to register, to, you know, to allow people to register from their homes, to allow, you know, something besides having to come here to this building to register, I think would be a helpful step, because people don't often have time to do that during their weekdays, they don't, I mean, the number of people who don't know where the municipal building is is shocking, I found, when I was out there. I like the participation in the voting machine, I have no problem with ScanTegrit system, I enjoyed that. And that's it, no more comments.
Thanks.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for coming today, all of you, and for your dedicated work to our elections. I think it's fantastic, and it's incredible the amount of time that you put in, it really is appreciated, thank you. You know, the reason that I like the ScanTegrit system is because it provides the paper trail, and it's verifiable, and so I think that's the advantage that we have over what we had prior to that. It may not be the only choice, but I think it's been a good choice for us. The one thing that was an issue this last year was the count at the end of the election, at the last election, and I know that you understand the importance of not having to go through that again in coming elections.
Yes, I understand the importance of that. That has been fixed.
That's great.
It has been fixed.
And that's just what I wanted to hear from you, is what the status was on that, and if we can be assured that that's not going to happen again.
I can assure you that I like not having the report ready in time even less than you like it.
All right.
There's my hair laying on the floor upstairs in Jesse's office.
And, and lastly, I'd just say that although most of the people who want to vote have already been registered and are registered, but I would encourage you and the board to provide this council with any recommendations you have for how we can help to motivate the rest of the community to go out and participate in the elections. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Daniels, go on.
Yes, I also, Ann, thank you so much for all the work that you and the Board of Elections do. I really appreciate your conscientious effort and your hair pulling. You know, you've always done a great job, you've always been available, and in my experience, an excellent job, but I also found, it must be an old thing, the ScanTegrit, very confusing. I just, I walked in there and went, "Oh, my gosh, I'm not even sure I voted for myself."
Oh, no.
So, you know, it just, you know, I just, it may be because I did participate in the, in your little, a couple of years ago, we had a little mock election.
Mock election, yeah.
And I didn't like it then, so I may have walked in with, I may have had. And I didn't like it then, so I may have walked in with, I may have had an attitude, you know, that I never got.
We can work with you on that.
Yeah, I never, that I never got rid of. But I thought it was a little more complicated than just making an X next to a name and sticking the, I do appreciate that it's, you know, it's a good system and that you can't really cheat on it, I just, it was a little complicated. I also was wondering why there weren't any other cities that use that, but now that Councilmember Mayo said there are other cities that use the voting system, they just don't, you know, have the number to check, to check back. They use the same, the same kind of a magic thing, where you stick it in a machine and the machine goes beep, and something happens. So I can understand that. I really appreciate your continual, the Board of Elections, and your constantly trying to find better ways to do the elections. I did appreciate using this room for the last election, even though, right at 7:00, they were backed up to Maple Avenue on this, on this side, like four and five deep, though it did move pretty quickly. The good news was it wasn't raining or freezing cold, so, because I think they wouldn't have stayed. I didn't see too many people actually leave. I would have maybe tackled them, especially if they were from Ward 3, and thrown them back in the line. So, no, I do, I really, you're always looking for a better, more efficient, effective way. I'm also questioning the voter registration. When I read this initial, the blue paper, my first comment was how to facilitate voter registration. And I know you're a small group, but even if you had a table set up at every festival, every major festival, with a big sign that says, you know, this is how you register to vote, or this is how you vote in the city, or you got a scan integrity machine there so people could play with it, I know you have to have electricity, but maybe, maybe just to see what it was like, it would get people's, it would get people's attention. That's my one thing. And then, once the little guys are registered, sweet things that they are, how do we get them out to actually vote? That's the next thing. I know in Ward 3, out of about 2,300 registered voters, we only had, we had about 438 to 450 that actually voted in this election. I know Ward 2 had a, had a record number, but it was still.
Under 40%.
It was, yeah, it was still, you know, 20 or 25%, maybe 30% of the population. So I just, I don't know how to get across to the people in this city that voting at a grassroots level, participating at a grassroots level, is the most magical thing you can do with your vote. You know, your vote really does count when you're voting in a municipal election. So I have no answer to that question either. I just, you know, we all knocked on doors, we all got people to say then vote, and yet it's still, even in a contested race, it, you know, it wasn't as much as I thought it'd be a whole lot more.
Yeah, it's a conundrum, because voting is not compulsory and it's the right thing to do, and a lot of people do like to vote, and they like to be seen voting, they like to see their neighbors and so on, but there's still just a small proportion of, fewer than you think, would come out and vote. And, you know, I've done research on it, there are published books on it, and.
Yeah. I just, I, yeah, I'm wondering if it's the same percentage that votes in, you know, the state election that votes in a national election, I'm not sure, it may or may not be. It's a little bit higher percentage, I don't know the answer to that, so, I'll maybe look it up online this time to see how many people voted from our area that are totally registered.
Yeah, the county makes those data available, so you could.
Yeah. But thank you again, I mean, I, even in spite of the, that machine, I call it "that" machine, you all do a great job. I'm just, you know, that's what I said, it's got to be, because I'm an old person, I don't like those electronic things, so, but I really like to text.
Well, maybe we should have a scan integrity open house or something like that.
That might, you know, you did it for that one, that one time when it was, you know, you had a.
Yeah, the mock election.
A lot of, the mock election, the kids could come and vote, it might be another, you know, maybe an off-year or even in and on-year, in the summertime or springtime or something of the next year.
Okay, I'll note that, thanks.
It's just more work for you guys, then I can say what a great job you're doing.
Councilmember Mayo, you have a follow-up.
I do, yes, sorry, I forgot a couple of things. You mentioned Saturday voting, and I think that would be a fantastic addition. I heard and hear from people frequently about the, how valuable it would be to be able to vote not on a workday. Second idea is, I wonder if the, if there's any value in working with University of Maryland, for example, to develop a PSA, to have students develop a PSA to explain how to do instant runoff voting. You know, some sort of product that's user-friendly, that is a YouTube video that helps people figure out how to do it, that, whether we can do any education or outreach like that, and we can get some volunteers to play a role there. And the third, relating to Councilmember Daniels Cohen's point, turnout in 2008 in the Maryland state election was roughly 79%. It was 82% in Montgomery County, having one of these really, when you're, when you're sitting here. And we had, what, in the last election, I think, 18%.
Yeah.
So, you know, 60% lower turnout between 2008 and 2010. And I'm just curious, and this may be a question that goes well beyond you, but, you know, what's the benefit of having elections in off-years? Why not have elections in the same year as a state presidential, gubernatorial election? You know, what do we get by doing that? Except that we clearly can use our own system, as we do now. But it seems like we sacrifice a lot of turnout by doing so.
That's a good question. There is some reason that it's held in off-years, and maybe Jesse knows what that reason is. It is the custom among the smaller municipalities to have their, like, City of Rockville, Gaithersburg, we.
And I saw that there's some legislation right now before the state for some, it's either a city, I think it's a city to, in Maryland, to move their voting to, to the same year as a national election.
The reason tends to be that people have always felt that when it's all focused on the national election, people just don't follow, don't get down to the level of the municipal election. I know my experience has been, a lot of times, if I get questions about the election, like the primary that's coming up April 3rd, people either contact me ahead of time or ask me at the polls, gee, I don't know anything about the Board of Elections, can you tell me anything that will help me choose here? They know about the top, and the farther down you get, the less they know. So it's to separate it out and say, no, pay attention, this is an election on different kinds of issues on a different level, keep it separate.
Thanks, I knew there was a reason.
And I have one quick follow-up. There hasn't been any talk tonight about possibilities for other locations for voting.
Oh, yes, thank you. We had explored the possibility of another location, and it became immediately obvious that it would cost possibly as much as twice as much to have the election in two different locations. And given the budget cuts exercises, we thought, mm, not right now, basically.
Twice as much means what? How much is, how much are we spending now?
I don't know. There's the cost of the supplies, ballots and so on, there's, and then there's the cost of paying the election judges, and we would probably need approximately the same number of people in both locations. So there's the election judge pay, there's the training for the election judges, which takes the time here. I guess that doesn't, well, I guess that's partly city time and partly my time. And then the food for the election judges, and then using the space, which would most likely be the center on New Hampshire Avenue, so.
If we, if we did explore adding Saturday voting, it could be in one location and the Tuesday voting could be in another, but anyway.
We're also considering the possibility of multiple early voting locations, for instance, at Victory Tower and City Council, the City Hall here, or the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue, there are many possibilities to choose from there.
What's our budget for elections, approximately?
We budgeted, I think, 13, 15,000, we didn't use that, it was under 10. I don't have the, I can provide the exact amount, it was less than that.
And part of that is, we didn't have to pay for the scan integrity, all of that stuff.
Right.
And in previous years, when we had to, that was an additional cost.
Right, right, yeah. We do pay for the e-poll books, but it's not, we don't pay much for that.
Okay, thanks. Thank you all very much.
Did any of you folks want to add anything, or did I pretty much cover it?
[inaudible].
Okay, thanks, just wanted to be sure. Thanks.
There was concurrence that you did a good job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are any other questions arise, you can find me through Jesse or, well, you know how to find me. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks. Okay, we've got a couple of regular meeting agenda items. First one is a second reading ordinance authorizing execution of contract for auditing services. Do you want to say anything about this one?
Nothing has changed since the first reading two weeks ago. The city is required by both the city charter as well as by state law to have an independent audit of its basic financial statements done on an annual basis. Our current contract expired with the FY 11 audit, and I think as Ms. Brooks had indicated, on March 12th, we did issue a request for proposals and got four proposals for auditing services and one for the preparation of the comprehensive annual financial report.
Would you like to move it?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Siemens, second by Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Any comments, any public comments? It's a roll-call vote.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously. The next item is a second reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract.
Would you like to move it?
Second.
For preparation of the city's comprehensive annual financial report.
I'll move that, too.
It's been moved and seconded. And I'll just say a quick word about this one. This restricted city contracts with firms that provided services, goods or professional services to the military regime in Burma. There was suspension of enforcement after a Supreme Court ruling, and the ruling was basically that our law was preempted by an act of Congress that imposed federal sanctions on Burma.
I think you want to head on this?
Oh, did I get to, sorry, audit. Audit, I was moving paper too fast. Never mind, now you've heard about the next one.
Financial report was on.
Financial report, well, it was all about Burma.
It's moved and seconded.
Yes, did you want to say something? Oh, but the light's on.
We were trying to get your attention to say, go back to the Capitol before you went to Burma.
No, let's do Burma first. It was, it was moved and seconded. Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
It was, it was, it was because of that moving that got me.
Trying to save time and look at that.
Yeah, see, see?
The answer's aye.
Any public comment on this? No. Okay, now we'll move to the roll-call vote.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously, and now we'll move to the Burma ordinance, what I said before.
Well, can you tell us about that?
I already told you. Somebody want to move it?
Burma shave.
Somebody want to move it?
I'll move it.
Oh, Councilmember Snipper beat you to it, Councilmember Schultz is the seconder. Any comments on this one? Any public comments? Will a clerk please call or roll?
Oh, he had a comment coming.
Oh, there's a comment, oh.
Yes, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, your official police delegate. I would like to ask you people, if you guys delete the Free Burma Committee, could you please somehow put in a peace and justice committee to replace it? Because of what's been going on in this country is showing that we do, as a city, need a peace and justice committee. Because I've been thinking about that ever since that boy Trevon was shot in a racist shooting in Florida. Because I think, you know, that as a city, it could happen here, it could happen anywhere else, you know, because, and I think what this city is, it shows, is that we're crying out for a peace and justice committee, you know, to see how we want to address issues like this. So if you guys decide to get rid of the Free Burma Committee, please, can you think about putting in a peace and justice committee for a peace-oriented city like Tacoma Park? Because we've been the first in many things, and I think we could still be the first in leading the country in many other things, too. Thank you very much for letting me share.
Thank you. Any other comments? Will a clerk please call or roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
That was six ayes and a yes. The next item is our consent agenda. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. This is a roll-call vote as well on the, what are there, 13 or 12 or however many.
Eleven is the number, 12, 12.
It's been moved and seconded, right, so you call or roll?
It has, okay. Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously as well. We'll take a short break, and we'll come back for our last two items. And we're ready for the street study and resurfacing plan.
Are you wearing your agenda?
We're right there, the timing was perfect.
Timing was perfect, good. Well, we're going to do a little tag-team approach, though we haven't practiced it, so it's a little, a little rough. But I just wanted to start with some general comments, kind of paint the picture, and Ali can get into some technical details about what we do with our street program and our pavement restoration program for the city. As some of you may recall, we had our first pavement assessment done by an outside contractor in 2003, and so we have some rehab, recap of the results of that, as well as an update from a new pavement assessment that we had done in 2010.
Hey, Joe, just, we're not seeing it yet.
Oh, okay. I guess what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the past, and then Ali can bring you forward into the current state of affairs. Let's see, that should remind me. Nope.
General, give us a.
There we go.
Give us a minute.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay, we're good, we're good.
Now, I need to get reminded how to change slides, so I just, there. Because it just did, oh, maybe down, there we go. Doing this in sections. As I mentioned before, I'm going to talk a little bit about the past, the original study in 2003. I was here at the time and Ali wasn't, and then he can speak more about the more current assessment. The previous street study we had done was an actual manual assessment, where we had assessors walking each street with clipboard, counting data regarding cracking, pavement patches, surface condition. In addition to the assessment of the pavement, they also did a core sample of each street, so we had a subsurface evaluation of how thick our asphalt was, what type of base surface we had beneath our streets. And then we also, for many of the streets, had a traffic count. Of course, this is a one-time, you know, one-shot-in-time assessment of the volume of traffic, daily traffic loads on the streets. That was interesting and new information for us. As you can see from the graph there, the number of streets that we had rated in excellent condition exceeded the rest of them, but we had a pretty good, pretty good amount in the fair and poor category, and hence the city council embarked on a major program at that point, where we had a significant amount of funding that was assessed towards street resurfacing. And we went about in a very rigorous way, addressing some of those fair and poor streets with the goal of establishing all the streets in the city from that point forward to fair and better condition, and maintaining a program from here on out where we keep streets at that, at that level and don't. that, at that level, and don't slide back into a situation where we have a significant percentage of our streets in, in fair or poor condition.
Darrell, can I just ask one quick question about previous to this study? I know that the city did some evaluations, but they weren't condition ones like this?
I wasn't aware of any pavement condition studies that were done previous to 2003.
Because I know that there was a study way back in the early 90s that people used, that the council used for some time in evaluating stuff, but I don't think it was necessarily exactly similar to this one. But I know it was the one that created the original database of the street condition.
Yeah, Ali can address that.
I've looked into this. The first 1990s study, 1990s study, was more of an inventory-type study, which is geometry of the streets, length, whether there's sidewalk or not. So the bases of the ladder studies were all the first inventory. They did have some evaluation, but it wasn't like rating and conditioning, condition index.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to bring it up because I think that was the beginning of when the council first began to look at, gee, what, what's a, how long does, what's a time period for going through the streets? What would it take financially? And what does it mean for how long we could expect things to last? So it's been a refinement over now more than 20 years of trying to make sure that we've got a handle on this whole question.
Yeah, I think at that point, it was establishing the database, so the names of the street, the length, the width, whether they had curb, how many driveways, whether they had sidewalk, one side, two sides. So it was basically just that general database from which everything else then.
And, and it's the origin of saying, gee, we need to put X amount of dollars in the budget every year to address this. And, and it became obvious that the, some of the original ideas about it didn't go nearly far enough.
And then just a few more details on the previous study. Based on that study, we were, they identified that we needed to reconstruct almost two miles of streets. We need to resurface seven miles of streets, and we needed to seal or patch at least two miles of streets for a total of addressing 10.9 miles, and it costed just over $4 million. The chart you see there is the map of the city. It shows you what we did from 2004 to 2011. Each of the year is color-coded as to what, what year it was done. As I mentioned before, we had a, quite a bit of funding in the early years. There was an initial influx of over $1 million that was used towards street resurfacing. And then from 2007 to 2011, the funding level was based on a $500,000 capital budget, subtracting from that the loan payment that the city needed to pay back for the initial money that was used in 2004, 2005, and 2006. The results of what we did in that timeframe, we resurfaced, actually, it's a little bit more, it's about 10 and a half miles of streets, a cost of a little over $3.5 million, and we addressed 107 blocks or street segments. And so with this, I'm going to hand it over to Ali to speak more about the specifics of where we are with the new evaluation in 2011. The other thing I wanted to pass out, I have available, is a by-ward listing of the streets that were resurfaced and the cost for those streets.
Darrell, I think there's still one question for you.
Right, I was just curious. You said what got done, how does that compare to what we were projecting back when we started that 500?
It cost us a little less money to do the amount of street work that we needed to do, so we're right on track with, with the work that we needed to do. For those of you that can recall, we had quite a bit of challenges during that time. We had the WSSC, the initial WSSC work in the city, and some other construction projects. For instance, the park and plantings, park renovation project that has delayed the resurfacing of Grant Avenue for several years. So we have, have had to work around some of that. There's a number of projects that we'll be completing this year that have been on the list for several years, waiting for the construction cycle or utility project to be completed. So we've had to move things around from year to year, but as you can see from the, I think it's slide two, where it cost us a little less money, and we've got about 10 and a half miles of streets resurfaced.
Thank you.
And, and on the handout that you provided, can you remind folks what PCI is?
PCI stands for Pavement Condition Index. It's on a scale of zero to 100, the rating of the streets. And when Ali gets to a little further down in his slide presentation, we'll show you what the different categories of number relative to pavement condition. Basically, you want to see 85 to 100 in your PCI, and that's a good to, to excellent street surface condition, and anything below mid-50s is, is where you're getting a street in the fail-to-poor condition. And that list there, of course, we were addressing the worst streets in the city. If you can remember from the earlier charts, we had quite a bit of streets in the fail-to-poor condition, and so the emphasis of the work was to bring those up to resurfaced in excellent condition.
And, and the reason we became convinced to do the loan was to address those streets so that they didn't get worse, and the ones that were not in fail-to-poor but were in good condition didn't fall into the fail-to-poor category before we got to.
Right, right. Some of it is trying to make most of the money you have in an earlier state. The worse a road gets, generally, the more subsurface problems you end up, and the higher cost you have for that road repair. Ali's got a slide that he's going to get to later that speaks directly to that. How did we do in terms of holding the line on our good streets and bringing the others up to, up to pace?
Thank you. How do you change this?
Oh, you hit the down key, and it kind of flips it through.
The 2011 study obviously was the continuation of the original work that was done. In 2011, we decided to use a company called EnterInfo, which produced the software. Not only they did the state evaluation, they also provided the software that essentially was a management tool, so we could actually all the time be on top of how these streets are. The objectives are the same, but they changed that inspection or the state evaluation this time was done by automation, which is, you know, we'll go through that with video and images. It did the PCI rating via software, which is before, it was done manually, obviously. The ability to produce various reports was also part of the software, and we could manipulate it to come up with different scenarios as to what kind of a repair, what kind of a So we could come up with the optimum budget expenditure to get the, the most for the buck. And we also have, we haven't got that far into the program yet, forecast capabilities. So we could actually, with that software, we're enabled to predict how, what the rate of deterioration would be in a pavement, in theory. The next slide shows that there is a van with six cameras, three on the front, three on the back, and it would actually travel through the streets while taking images, and images of not only the pavement, but also the roadway. The van is equipped with a GPS system, which measures distances and decides direction, so it tells the satellite all the time where it is, and also puts into a program, which would later become an extension of our GIS. There is also equipment there that it could measure the dips of a crack. We didn't use that feature of it that much, wasn't used because the, the streets are, you know, relatively, the pavement sections are relatively thinner than state highway, for example. But there is a laser-guided crack detection system on that machine. This is a slide that shows basically the various types of distress and the pavement condition editor, which we could actually go in there and decide what kind of a repair is, is needed. We could override it, or we could let the program decide what kind of, depending on the stress, distresses and the cracks, and the intensity of them, the types of them, what kind of a repair would be needed. This is part of a GIS that we, we actually have that as an extension of GIS, as I show in the next slide. The reporting capabilities would let us sort the streets by maintenance type, like if we're going to do a major repair, or we're going to do just resurfacing or crack sealing. Also allow us, along with the PCI rating of the street, to have a priority ranking, and we also allow us to plan for multiple years based on this one study. Again, it has capability of custom-defining the repair methodology, whether we use two inches or four inches of milling and resurfacing, or whether we go to a, we could actually override the program and decide, depending on other data, or human input, as we call it, what kind of a repair we are going to exercise for a given set of distresses. Could also, we have a good capability of changing the prices as the time goes on and as bid prices increase. This slide shows that the software can be used as an extension of GIS, and whatever capability GIS has, we would be able to utilize for the use of the pavement, EnterInfo software. It's the same slide. Okay, finally, we have the capability of actually inventorying all the, all the features that are in the street, that have used this as a tool for our asset management. Could use like a, all the street signs or traffic signs as one GIS layer, and keep track of what signs are needed, what sign can be changed. These are our future plans to expand on this use of the software. As we can see, everything that can be seen can be positioned globally and put in the software. This last slide compares the ratings of the street between the two studies, 2003 and 2011. It can be seen that are satisfactory or very good. There was a slight difference in the terminology that two studies used, based on the advances on, actually, I can say that the current study ups the standard. In other words, what was fair before, now is poor, or something like that. Or what was good is now considered fair, as you can see on those numerical distribution, like to your earlier question. Usually, we didn't have any failed street, what, what was considered to be failed or seriously damaged. There was about three and a half miles of very poor street based on the previous study, and this study shows that it's gone down to about a little over one mile. And on the other extreme, the satisfactory, very good street, showed, showed a drastic improvement. Excellent or good streets stayed just about the same. So that shows how we have rated in 2004, 2011. And these are just preliminary work in progress scheduled for this year, for what streets we're going to do, based on Ward, street name, and the cost estimate. I must add that these are preliminary, working on those to make it, you know, according to our criteria, more refined. This is FY3, 13. We're coming up with about a half a million for each year, worth of total cost of renovation of the streets. That concludes our slide presentation. I'll be happy to answer any question you have.
One thing I'll point out is some of the Ward designations were wrong on those last three.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm sure if we have that, council members will be glad to send in corrections.
Could you, well, the last slide?
The, the last three. Just for instance, the first one, Grant Avenue is Ward 1, not Ward 6. So we don't need to go through them now, but we, we know they're, you know, I, I could sense everybody up here going, ooh, ooh, that's wrong.
We've been making some changes on these slides in the last couple hours. I don't know how to get it back to.
That's all right.
Being on page. But I, I wanted to focus on this slide because this really tells you what we've been doing since 2004, from current slide. Great. The numbers above those columns, the blue columns, that's actually a reference to miles. So as you can see, over the past eight years, the amount of streets in good or excellent condition, 85 to 100, has not fallen, and that's, that doesn't mean that the streets have stayed the same, because just like us, streets age, and you can't expect that a street that was rated in excellent condition in 2003 is going to be rated in excellent condition in 2011. So what's that showing is we haven't lost anything in terms of good-conditioned streets. That means we're keeping up with and making improvements to the streets so that we have a significant portion of our streets in excellent condition over time. The amount of streets in the very good or satisfactory column has jumped greatly from the previous 2003 study of 3.8 to over 13 miles. So again, what you can see is those streets that had previously been rated very poor or serious or failed were resurfaced and then moved into the very good column as a result of that resurfacing. The number of fair and good streets and poor and fair streets is also favorable in the 2011 compared to 2003. And so I think that what that slide shows to me, or what we're trying to communicate with that, is the impact of the funding and the efforts that have been taken over the past eight years in terms of street condition in the city. We're in a very different place in 2012 than we were in 2003, when this first study was done. And anyone who wants to sort of see what that three or $4 million buys, this, this answers that question. This is what it takes to bring streets from a largely less-than-half-full situation to a, you know, the glass is half-full scenario.
Joe, just a quick question. This looks like we have roughly 30 miles of city-run, city-operated street, is that right?
A little more than 30 miles.
Including state highways.
What's that? It does not include state highway roads. We're just evaluating the streets that our city owned and maintained. We did have the contractor drive some state highway roads in 2011. The assessments weren't done in 2003 for those roads. Ethan Allen Avenue was one that we asked them to take an assessment of, and Flower Avenue was one that we asked them to take an assessment of. Given, you know, political situation that was going on, we were aware we were likely to gain Flower and hopefully be able to hand, hand off Ethan Allen. So we do have pavement condition and assessments for those streets, but this is reflecting the city streets themselves.
Yeah, I think this chart is, is very helpful and demonstrates very quickly and easily the, the change that has happened. I just have one question about, in the, in the later slides, when you were looking at the three years with the work to be done and the anticipated 500,000, how, how is the, how does this reflect, or does it reflect, the money that we've collected from various utilities for work where they've gone into the streets and we basically kind of put it in escrow? How does that money feed into this process?
It's not reflected in these charts in terms of cost. We do have several streets that we negotiated with WSSC over. In the early days, when WSSC was doing some work, we first started with a memorandum with them where we asked them to pay for 50%. them where we asked them to pay for 50% of the street resurfacing cost in conditions where the road was in certain state. And then the original arrangement was, once we resurfaced that road, we then showed them our invoices and they paid their 50%. We all decided that was fairly cumbersome and convinced WSSC to come up with the money upfront. So we now have a fund in the city that's funded through those identified roads, through a memorandum with WSSC, where they contributed our assessed cost for 50% of the street resurfacing. We no longer follow that model. We've taken a fairly aggressive approach in the city where we identify through the permit process and with the utility company, we just require that they mill and pave, regardless of whether, whether or not they're affecting half of the street, or their pavement cut is in the center of the street. So our position with the utility companies over the past three years, and it's been a learning curve for us. We've never had this type of, you know, we've had a lot of utility work in the city over the past five or six years. And it doesn't seem to be abating, the rate of which utility companies are coming in. We tend to go, it kind of has a up and down curve. But our approach at this point is anytime a street is being affected, if it's in a street in good condition, we're requiring that they mill and pave the street from curb to curb. And that has become the new reality for us with permit, pavement permitting. So we do have some streets from the previous MOUs where we've got a stock of money that we set aside, and when we get to those roads, we'll use that to offset the cost that the city has to pay for that. But the way we see it in the, from here and future is that we're gonna require WSSC to mill and pave the roads as they impact them.
So we basically have a grandfathered pot of money for those particular streets, and it's being escrowed for those streets, not used in any of these upcoming budgets?
Yep.
Okay.
It will, it will supplement the cost of the, the road work.
Right.
And again, at this point, this is a very cursory glance. What we don't have, because we haven't done actual field assessments, is we don't know where we are in terms of curb and gutter work, in terms of driveway apron replacement. In the past, we've addressed sidewalks, when we mill and pave the roads. We're now in a situation where we will be coming up to some streets where we've already done an ADA retrofit on the sidewalk, so we won't have those same kind of concrete costs in the future. So we're really in a, you know, changing time in terms of how to assess the additional costs. We used to calculate about 20% in addition of the pavement cost for the concrete work. We'll be gathering data over the next few years to see what the more accurate percentage is in terms of cost, but it'll vary greatly from streets from those that we've done ADA work on. The cost will be much less. For those that we haven't done the ADA work on, at this point, the cost will probably be, you know, in the ballpark of what it had been in the past of 20%.
Okay, and just one quick question, and I'll go to my colleagues. I want to make sure we understand the status of the, of the inspection that was done and that is going into the GIS. It sounded to me like you were saying that the data was all collected. We may not be using it all yet, but it, it has been collected so that as we want to get to use it, we have it, as opposed to having to go back and do it again.
There's sort of two phases of the work that we had done. The pavement assessment, where they use the cameras and the LiDAR and the video inspection, that's all integrated into our GIS. It's fully loaded into our system. Ali has the ability to pull that up, view the cameras, play around with the numbers and assessments. The piece of it that has been videotaped but not integrated into our GIS is what we call our assets. If we wanted to create a layer, for instance, for all the signs, or utility poles, or sidewalks, or curb and gutter, or stormwater inlets, or hydrants, there's ways that you can actively, while you're on the system, geolocate those, name them, log them, and, and pinpoint them on the GIS system.
So, so it's up to us to want to be able to get to it and do it, as opposed to saying, gee, we have to go back and do something else?
Right, that data layer has been collected. It's all videotaped in there, just hasn't been translated and geolocated into the, into our GIS. We haven't created layers for that. We were originally thinking that within our administrative staff in the Public Works Department, we could do that. We now have no administrative staff in the Public Works Department, so that, that project's been put on hold. We're talking to the contractor about ways to, you know, have them follow up with that. So we're, we'll be comparing costs. There is a benefit to doing it in-house in that we have the inherent knowledge. We know, you know, the streets, we, we have a better sense of it. So we'd like to be able to integrate that GIS layer onboard. But it's one of those things that it'll just take time, and we'll be doing it piece at a time, street at a time.
Thanks, Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for coming tonight, this late hour. It's really interesting and pleasing to hear the, the progress we've made. I remember back, how many years ago, 2004, that things, roads were in pretty dismal shape, and it's good to see us moving in the right direction. The, on that bar chart you had up there before with the miles by condition, I see that at the, the lower end of that, or to the right-hand side of that chart, it shows very few miles left in the poorer condition.
Oh, this is embarrassing.
You're getting there.
Sorry, this is the 2011 numbers that you were looking at?
Right, right. Looking at the 2011 numbers, the, there are few roads left at fair to good or worse. And I'm just wondering, I assume that you're addressing those soon?
Yes.
And wondering, and wondering how many of those will be left at the end of the year, or how long it's gonna take you to address all of those?
There's kind of a combination way in which that we approach our street resurfacing in the future. One of the things is certainly pavement condition-driven, but there are also other factors that are sometimes not reflective within the pavement condition itself. So it's not necessarily as simple as you take the lowest number, whatever street rated the lowest number, and that's the one you do first. I mean, to some degree it is, but there are also other conditions. The type of assessment we have and the type of information base we have that shows, in addition to the pavement condition, we also know what the subsurface is, so we can get a sense of how quickly that's gonna degrade, or whether we've got a strong enough base so that we can stretch it out a little bit longer, whereas another street has no base. And so any, you know, lingering delay in resurfacing that street is actually gonna add geometrically to the cost of resurfacing that. So we do try to evaluate some other conditions in addition to the pavement, the subsurface as well as the traffic load. And so by and large, the streets you see in 2012, this year, and FY13, and what we're projecting in FY14, those are at the bottom end of the PCI. But there are also some that aren't necessarily the lowest number that we're integrating in because of the potential for increased cost if we don't address them sooner.
Right, and I appreciate your, you're doing it that way. But I think I would certainly like to see that all the poor or worse roads be repaired and replaced in the, as soon as possible.
Sure.
It might be interesting to hear at the budget time, how much additional funding it would take to be able to do that, if funding is the limiting resource. It may be equipment, people, power, whatever, but...
All the city street work is done by contract, so we have a contractor that does all our street resurfacing work. Based on the, the track record from 2003, I don't know how comfortable Ali is with this, but I'm certainly comfortable in saying that I feel very confident in the budget numbers that we have, particularly now that we're getting to the stage where we're gonna be spending the half a million dollars a year. Since 2007, we've had reduced numbers from that because we've been using a portion of that to pay the loan. And so I'm very comfortable with the level of funding we have in terms of knocking out the rest of the fair and below streets and maintaining...
In the next year.
Over the course of the next few years, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is what would it take to do it in the, within the next year? What additional resources would it take to be able to do that?
We can take a look at that. What we're looking at is a total, if you see the very poor streets there, we've got .7 miles, less than a mile, and the poor streets, .4 miles. So we're just got a little...
That's why I suspect it's not gonna be a whole lot of additional...
Right, a little over one mile of streets that are in less than, less than fair condition at this point in time.
Right. So I think it would be fair for us to just knock those off at this point.
Well, and in, in the case, we will be doing that unless we have reason to want to move another street in because of the subsurface issues.
And I'm just suggesting there may be additional funding would let us do both of those things. Okay, I wanted to ask about the condition of Ritchie Avenue. I know that that was resurfaced right about the time we were approving this, this plan and the, and borrowing the money to get started. But yet it has, it has degraded more than, than I think we would have liked.
Oh, absolutely. Ritchie is a classic street for what happens if utility companies don't do what they're supposed to do. Because if you look at Ritchie Avenue, you can see exactly where the waterline trench was dug in the street. That's where it failed. They had a subcontractor that was not compacting the subgrade beneath it and was not restoring the subbase of the street. That was a huge but painful learning curve. We do have Ritchie Avenue to be resurfaced over the next, I think it's in FY14, I'm not sure, it's either 13 or 14. So we, we will be addressing the worst portions of Ritchie Avenue again. And that's a street whose pavement condition degraded much faster than any prediction because of the subsurface work.
The subsurface work was deficient before it was resurfaced.
Yes, yes. Which, you know, the, the key to any street is if you have a decent foundation, I guess it's the same within a house and any other construction, the better your base is, the better what you have is below the surface of that asphalt, the longer that street's gonna live. So Ritchie Avenue was a real turning point for the city in terms of our negotiations with the utility companies. And it really became kind of a critical turning point for now we require compaction test reports from the utility companies. If they're cutting out concrete in our base, we're requiring them to put concrete back with rebar. So there's, there's a much more aggressive approach that we're taking now with the utility companies.
Well, that's refreshing to hear. You know, the estimate and the, all of the, the planning was based on a 20-year life cycle for the road surfaces. And, you know, Ritchie Avenue didn't make it. How do you feel that, that is looking now? I know it's still early in the cycle, but are you still comfortable with that? And do you think it's still...
Yeah, I think, I think 20 years is gonna be, in terms of the bell curve, where we're gonna have most of our roads lasting too. There will be some anomalies out on either ends, ones that last much, much longer because they just don't have the pavement, or they have these enormous concrete subbase layers underneath, and, and some like Ritchie Avenue because of certain conditions that last much shorter. But I think 20 years is a very, very good...
And then lastly, you know, we had guessed, estimated that it was gonna take $500,000 a year to, you know, on into the future, to maintain the, the roads on that 20-year cycle. Are you still comfortable with that, that level?
Yes.
Do you think it's too high?
No, I don't think it's too high. I think it's a very, very reasonable approach.
It's, it's a reasonable number, or it's hard to predict like anything else. What would be the price of crude oil, and how would, how would it affect the price of asphalt?
You brought that part up, okay.
We've been lucky with the past few years because we've got good contracts and lower prices.
Right.
There's no guarantees it's gonna stay like that.
All right, thank you.
As a footnote, yeah.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a really fascinating report, and I really appreciate the work in putting it together. And I hope you'll be able to send us a copy or post it on the web.
It will be on the website after tonight, as well as the, the list of streets we've already done. And as we continue to tinker with our roads to be done, and the out years, we'll continue to add those to the city's website as well.
Yeah, that would be helpful. It would be, it would be, I think probably solve a lot of questions I'm going to get, if you'll address the issue that in this list, there's only a handful of streets listed for Ward 5 as having been repaired compared to the other wards. I wondered if you'd talk about why that is?
Well, the original worklist...
Softball question here.
Yeah, the original worklist was developed based on pavement condition, so it, it's a snapshot in time. It doesn't tell you anything that preceded that, and, and I don't know enough of the history of that to know how many streets in Ward 5 had recently been resurfaced. So at 2003's time, we had the road condition assessed, and then those were the roads that would, were called out to be resurfaced based on their condition after that point in time. I haven't taken a look. We, we really try to avoid looking at wards. We provide wards for your information when we're evaluating the streets. We're not paying attention to wards. It's really ward-neutral.
Our residents are, however.
Yes, I'm sure, I'm sure they are.
If I can add a little bit of information to that, in this list of what's been done since 2003, there's only three Ward 3 streets listed. And that's because most of the Ward 3 streets were done before 2003. At the beginning, there was a heavy preponderance.
Well, you have to put it in the context of the city's, you know, incorporation of portions of Prince George's County, which was largely Ward 3, and the county monies that were used to bring those roads up to condition after 97. So again, you, you're not seeing anything that preceded 97 to 2003 where millions of dollars were spent in, in those areas upgrading the, the roads. So we're really taking a snapshot at times. So in 2003, those were the roads that were identified as being in poor condition, fair to poor condition, and they were resurfaced. And then you can see in the future, over the next few years, what roads in each of the wards have been identified and what we'll be doing.
Yeah, because just looking at the snapshot in time, you go, boy, most of Ward 2 seems to have been done. Well, that's because that was all left to do after 2003.
The other thing that...
Everybody else's were done.
That's a fair explanation. It may be that I have to look at it to be able to address that. Maybe that a lot of good and excellent pavement condition were rated in Ward 5 at the time. It may not be that it was done less, but like Darrell said, we do not look at the wards, we look at the, basically we look at the ratings, and then there is like logistics involved. There's a street that's in fair condition next to a street that is in terrible condition, and we know we're gonna be doing the fair condition in two years. It just is a lot more efficient and economic to combine the two. So that's kind of the human input I refer to when I was doing. We look at these things, and we would actually make judgments because we don't go based on just numbers.
One of the other factors that will be new from this year on is, as I mentioned, our new stance with utility companies. We're gonna be having street resurfacing done, not by our own contractor, but by the utility company. So I'm very much interested in figuring out a way to track which streets were done, resurfaced by Washington Gas, WSSC, and track that pavement condition. We, of course, have permit conditions. We make requirements on what they have to do to restore the subgrade, and then they mill and pave, and they definitely have reputable companies doing that milling and paving work. But we're gonna be seeing, like in the next several months, Maple Avenue being repaved, Tulip Avenue being repaved, Willow, Valley View, Spruce, those are all streets that were not, may or may not have been on our, on our plan, but are gonna be resurfaced and brand-new surface streets from that. So it's really also going to, I guess perhaps you could say, provide a, kind of an unfair advantage to some degree. It'll make things look very good in the future. Money we didn't spend in the road condition will go up. So we're gonna have to figure out how we, we track that over time. We wanna be transparent and fair. And I think it will serve the city well, this new approach versus what we have done, which is to allow them to come in and do the roads, and then they, the roads require resurfacing more quickly than they would have otherwise.
A couple of other questions. Another softball question. I see that Hilltop Road is, between Maple and Geneva, is scheduled to be done. I assume you're gonna coordinate that with the sidewalk work?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah? Okay?
Yeah, the sidewalk work has a, has a timeframe, or I, I'm not sure if that's changed, but because it's a different pot of money, say for outstofschool drive, and that piece of it, there's a certain deadline by which that road has to be done. We also have the traffic calming. So we definitely wouldn't wanna put the traffic calming in before we resurface the road, so, you know, we're gonna have a little bit of chicken or egg situations with some of these, but we will do our best to put it in a logical order, which may mean moving things up, or may mean delaying things to take advantage of what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what the residents would like, that it be coordinated. And the last one is... one is, I didn't see the stretch between, on Maple Avenue, between Sligo and Maplewood. That's going up the hill there by the hospital. And that's a, an area, a street that's been, they did a lot of the tar work to do the patches.
Cracks you.
And that's worked fairly well. But there's a couple of growing potholes there, and I wondered what the schedule was for that one.
We just saw those potholes.
Yeah, well, a little bit higher up on Maple Avenue, between Edinburgh and Kennebec, we've got a few gaping potholes growing that we just ask our staff to, to cold patch. We can get the information to you about what it looks like now in terms of schedule for that street. I don't know off the top of my head if it shows up in the 13, 14, or if it's in one of the out-years.
It's pretty heavily traffic. That little, that block in particular is pretty heavily traffic because they use it as a cut through to go to Flower. Thank you.
Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ali and Darrell, for being here tonight. A couple of, I think, fairly simple questions. You provided us with this written list of the streets that were addressed. And then early in the slideshow, you had a map that showed by color the streets. Is that the same, those are the same places?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I'm looking forward to seeing a copy of the PowerPoint. That'd be really helpful. My second question is, if you could essentially overlay the 2003 and 2011 data, that you have the PCI index, the pavement condition index, for both 2003 and 2011, is that right? Or 2009, 2003, 2009? What were the two years?
Three and 11.
Three and 11, okay. If you could look at, because I guess what I see when I look at that, that graph, you've got a big slug of streets that are in the good condition. And I'd be really curious to know whether some streets are declining in condition more quickly than others. Ritchie was one example you gave. But, you know, sort of predicting that we're going to, the worst streets within two years, let's say, all the worst streets will be gone from that, that graph, that histogram. And then we'll be looking at, okay, of the, of the good streets, you know, which ones are going to come up next? And I wonder if you could just look at, you know, between the year that they were repaved and current year, how much pavement condition class has changed and track that. And as a way, as a predictive way to figure out future budgets. So I'm guessing there could be, in some years, a lot that you might predict are going to go, are going to be a problem or not. That's just a question about using that existing software. Because I'm assuming the numbers, I mean, that's the whole point of having a, what is a fairly extensive surveying process. It should allow you some predictive ability, I would think, I would hope.
Yeah, the one thing we don't have is the new software system doesn't integrate any of the 2003 data in it. Those were two separate, entirely separate studies. That's one of the, one of the positives of it is that these were two entirely separate studies, different companies, different techniques. So we don't have the ability to integrate the 2003 data, at least electronically, with the 2011 data. There may be a way that we can feed in the original data to see how it, how it's holding up and compare street by street based on rating.
To add a footnote to that, actually, without having the benefit of having 2003 data on a digital phone, so we could create a layer, an overlay, what you suggested. When we are going through the list, you could actually see these things that you know we've done, and the rating that is higher. And it can be done, you kind of do it intuitively, however, doing it so that it could, could it on GIS or could it on PowerPoint presented, it takes a little bit of a data interview from 2003 on.
Okay. And I just, I mean, I just, to me, this is a really powerful success story of the, you know, change over time. And so, I mean, as much as anything, that's what I want to be telling people, you know, these success stories of things, of conditions getting better. So going back to the ward question, you know, I, for example, would really like to know what the average PCI is per ward. And what you'd want to see is essentially of them to be fairly similar to one another. And if they weren't. So, for example, let's say, going back to Councilmember Seaman's comment about, you know, which street do you prioritize first? Well, you're doing some of the, many of the absolute worst ones. But then if you're looking at some fairs, some good streets that might be repaved, you might say, okay, well, Ward 2, or Ward 6, or Ward 4, you know, eh, at average, streets there are worse often. So being able to make a real equity argument that we're trying to, we're trying to sort of raise all boats would be, would be a great thing to be able to tell along with that story. But I think this, you know, this data that you have, that graph in particular, that histogram, is just a, would be a great thing to get out to people to say, you know, this, this represents progress. And I think, just the last comment is, in terms of the utility repaving, I would really urge you just to, to track it separately and, you know, have a utility in your database. But in terms of reporting out to residents, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, so much the better that someone else is paying for it. You know, they want to know that things are getting better, then we should tell them, you know, which streets have been repaved in the last year. That represents some improvement in quality of a service. And if the utility paid for it, if we paid for it, if the utility paid for it because we told them to, you know, that, that doesn't really matter. What people care about is, you know, this many streets have been repaved, this is the average pavement condition class, you know, that's, that's, that's the outcome that I think really matters.
Yeah.
Councilmember Schultz.
If you, that chart that lists the comparison of street ratings between 2003, 2011, the labels at the bottom, I don't understand because the left-hand box, there, it says, the left-hand box is excellent to good, and then the next box says it's very good to satisfactory.
It was a nomenclature difference between the 2003 study and the 2003, 2011 study. The two different contractors had different wording that they used to describe their PCIs. So, for instance, the 2003 study rated a street between 11 and 25 as very poor, whereas the 2011 study rated it as in serious condition. And same to be said of 26 to 55, the 2003 study rated it as poor, whereas the 2011 study rated it as very poor.
But the constant is the number.
The constant is the number. That's how we've compared it with the number.
Okay, so we really should just skip the words, in a sense.
Well, I think Ali's previous point was, the 2011 assessment, at least in wording, was a more rigorous evaluation. The numbering is the same category.
There is a reason for that, even in terms of recommendation for, for repairs, like whether you get two inches of milling and overlay or four inches of. There has been a shift, which is an upgrade, since 2003.
Okay.
On the standards, like a street that was considered to be okay generally, now is considered to be poor. That's an upgrade.
Yeah.
That is numerically also, it's numerically presented it, but it also reflects itself in a, in a method of repair, is what I'm saying.
So I can just use the left-hand labels, if I want, to interpret this, and just say, anything between 86 and 100 is excellent. Everything between 71 and 85 is very good.
Well, and our goal as a city is to keep streets in good condition and above. So, you know, we're looking for things above 56 in terms of street ratings.
Okay. How long will it take, in your opinion, to get all the streets in Tacoma Park onto a 20-year cycle? I mean, I know that's our policy, but getting there has, has been partly an aspiration.
I don't know if we can really answer that. Again, I would say we're, we're working in that track now, and we have been since 2003. So I think whether or not in 2023 we'll see the same streets being resurfaced again will largely be a result of where the utilities have worked, what the traffic load is, and if we did our jobs well in terms of paving. So it's not a, it's not a mathematical practice. There are so many factors that affect the lifespan of a road, that you can have a goal and you can have a program, but so many other factors are added into the mix.
Well, no.
I think we will see, and we can start tracking, when the last time was the road was paved. And we'll have data over time that shows if they're in the 17 to 23-year range or not.
Right.
Again, we've, our starting point is 2003, so we're eight years in. We haven't, you know, we're not repeating the cycle yet because we're only eight years in.
Right, yeah. Because I know the street, I mean, all of us in our respective wards are intimately familiar with our, our streets, and most intimately familiar, like with the ones we actually live on, or walk our dogs on, or something like that. And my street, Wildwood Drive, I know hasn't been paved in 30 years. And it's going downhill pretty, pretty noticeably in the last two or three years. The bird bath in front of my house, each year gets a little larger. And I have really mixed feelings about it because the birds just love it. You know, after a rainstorm, the water sits there for four or five days. And it's fascinating, this, you know, it's, it's almost a little wildlife thing. But on the other hand, I also kind of know that it's, it really needs to be fixed at some point in time. It's not a critical thing, but it's just...
If I might just interject, I don't mean to take you off your track, but it just reminded me that there's two other programs that the city's implemented since 2003. One, we've been doing for a while, that's going to also have a factor in this, which is our crack filling program. And so you might see it as those little squiggly shiny lines all over the street.
Yeah.
Again, when we did the assessment in 2011, I think what we found from that is that our crack filling program has been very effective at holding streets at bay, basically keeping them from deteriorating. So now they're rating a fair instead of had we not done the crack filling, they would have been poor or failed. So we, we were very encouraged by that, the data that reflected in that. And then the other piece is, the council authorized the purchase of a Miller paver for us, a piece of equipment, so that we can do our own in-house patching. We don't intend it to be a road resurfacing piece of equipment. We intended it for situations like you're mentioning in front of your house, where the general condition of a road may be okay, but there's sections where either because of an old utility cut, or because of something else that's happened, a piece of the road is in bad shape, but the rest of the road is okay.
Yeah.
So we're going to be using that machine to patch those pieces. And in that way, the overall condition of the road will remain very good, and we can address the patches themselves.
I'm really glad you, you interjected with that, with that information, because that really speaks to a lot of situations that I'm familiar with, where the road is, say, from one block to the next, is in pretty good condition. But there's, you know, three or four places that immediately come to my mind in my ward, where there's an area like 100 square feet, where, where the, the top layer of asphalt is just, you know, every time you walk by, there's those chunks of it laying around. Up in, at the corner on Merwood, at Wildwood, another one at, at Kirkland and Glen Side, it, for whatever reason, you know, it gets, it just gets a little larger as the seasons go by. And the, the thing is, is that while we can all be glad and proud of the progress that we're making in overall, percentage-wise, the, the people that live on these streets really don't give a darn about any of that. You know, I can go to them and say, well, yeah, but overall the city's streets are looking great. And they don't care, because what they care about is the fact that there's this strange little dip in the middle of the road that they're sick and tired of, and why can't the city, blah, 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 you know? And so, that's what I think really, in some cases, really is more urgent than getting the whole blocks paved, they're repaved, is being able to get some of these areas. There's, there's a, on Lancaster Street, which I brought to your attention, there's this, this crazy sag that runs diagonally across the street that is basically an ankle breaker, particularly in the fall, when it's covered with leaves and you don't see it. And there's other areas where the gutter pan is just literally disintegrated and doesn't even exist anymore. It's just dirt instead of a concrete pan. Doesn't take run, but maybe more than seven or eight, 10 feet. And doesn't mean the whole block has to be redone. And it would be great if we could figure out a way, really, this study that you're presenting really doesn't attempt to address those kinds of situations. But those are the kinds of situations that I need to try to respond to.
Well, we understand. And, you know, I guess all I can say is, third time's the charm there. We, we got that funded this year, on the third year of requesting. So we're anxious for that piece of equipment to arrive.
I can't wait.
And then we will put it through its paces. But I think it will play a very important role in the overall street program for the city.
It really will. It'll help get me re-elected. No, I'm kidding. Is it, is there a way to, for, for us to get a list of the streets in the city ranked, literally by, by PCI?
Yes, we have that.
You have that? It'd be just interesting to see, because to see where, if there's a street that I think is in, I don't know, say, poor condition, how, where it actually ranks in terms of the scheme of things. And the other, I guess the other comment that I had, is just getting a copy of this material, paper copy of what you've, of these, of these slides. I mean, you've given us a couple things, pages, but I'm just, can I, can I get a, a copy of that?
Yes.
So, well, this has been a long time waiting for, I know this, this contract was let about a year ago, wasn't it? Maybe a little longer.
Talking of-
And the results?
Until it was-
I'm really glad to see the results, because I've been curious and eager to, to see what you came up with. And I guess I'm relieved to know that it's actually producing the kind of data that you, you guys can really benefit from.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We'll go to our last item, which is our opportunity to share information with each other in the public on anything that we feel is important for our service on COG boards and committees, the volunteer fire department, or other similar entities that we serve on. Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm currently serving on two COG boards and committee, or committees, I guess. Well, one's a board, one's a committee. And I'll just share, just very briefly, a couple of things that I think have been of interest recently. I'm on the Transportation Planning Board, which is the regional body that approves transportation projects in the metropolitan Washington area. It's required by the federal government programs. They have a regional body that approves these. One of the sad things is that there have been lots of reductions in projects, planned projects, in recent years because transportation money has dried up. And so projects that were longtime hoped for have either been moved out into, you know, out-years, or just deleted entirely from the plans. That's a little sad. A second thing that I want to mention is an air quality issue. The TPB keeps, has a very elaborate model for estimating air quality out into the future due to changes in transportation vehicle mix, age of the vehicles, and so on. It's quite an elaborate model. Vehicle miles driven, you know, mix of cars, and so on. And the Washington area is doing okay with regard to air quality, by which I mean we are under the limits set by the federal government. And the reason this is important is that if you are not under the limits, then all the projects come to a grinding halt. And, and that includes metro, it includes bus things, it includes roadwork. It's quite dramatic. So, just to let my colleagues know that, you know, particulate matter and smog and all the other, you know, things that are used for air quality are pretty much on target. These forecasts are pretty uncertain going out into the future. It's hard to predict such things into the future. But if things go as current- future. But if things go as currently planned, and the projects that are currently planned come to fruition, because these models include the planned projects, so if, for example, some bus project is not done, it has an impact on the air quality, because there's an assumption about how much pollution is reduced, you know, how much pollution is reduced by that project, and so on. I don't want to give you all the gory details of this. But anyway, the region's doing pretty well. The last thing I want to mention on the TPB is they are also quite involved in emergency preparedness efforts with regard to transportation issues. And there's been a fair amount of exasperation by the TPB over the amazing difficulty of getting the regional bodies to work together on emergency preparedness. As you know, the Snowmageddon incident a little over a year ago highlighted the lack of coordination rather dramatically. And while there have been efforts to do better, it's still a concern, I would say, among folks at the regional level, that we are really not prepared, even this many years after 9/11, to handle an emergency like another Snowmageddon. The other committee I'm on, the Human Service and Public Safety Committee, I don't, that's mostly an informational body, people sharing what they're doing. We get reports on what different parts of the region are doing. And two areas that are focused are work on gangs. And this committee has done a lot on supporting local and regional efforts to deal with gangs, information sharing, getting the police chiefs and other public officials working on it collectively, collaboratively, and so on, with some success, actually. The other focus over many years is obesity, and that's been less successful. One of the more interesting presentations was the impact of sidewalks on obesity. Turns out that careful studies show that where there are sidewalks, obesity is less, not necessarily causative, but there's certainly an association there. And it's particularly true for schoolchildren. So we had a long, lengthy discussion about, wouldn't it be good if schools saved some money by not busing kids to schools who lived close to schools? So increasing the distance before you could get on the bus. Currently, in some jurisdictions, it's a very, very short distance before, you know, if you live within a half mile or more, you can get on a bus. And many people suggested, why don't they make that a little farther?
Back in my day, that was five miles.
I was just going to say, as you know, many areas of the region really have no possibility for sidewalks, and then other areas are quite resistant to sidewalks. We've had some of that here. So it's a little unfortunate, because this is a kind of a twofer. Schools would save some money on busing by changing their rules a bit, and communities would have lower obesity rates if we had more sidewalks. But anyway, that's sort of the couple of things I've gotten out of my COG committees.
Other folks want to report on anything? Councilmember Schultz?
I sit on the COGS Committee on Climate, Energy, and the Environment. And it's a committee that I just recently joined, having been in the last couple, first couple of years of my service on the city council with the Air Quality Committee. So I could probably speak about that much more than I could. The Climate, Energy, and Environment Committee, I think I'm getting ready to attend my second or third meeting on Wednesday of that committee. It doesn't meet that often. It meets about four times a year. But what it's trying to do, by virtue of being part of the Council of Governments, is to try to do a lot of cross-fertilization of helping jurisdictions within the metropolitan area learn from each other, as well as from other metropolitan areas, about techniques for energy savings at the governmental locality level, environmental programs that are working. And the committee sends out an annual questionnaire to municipalities with regard to their efforts in the environmental area. As with any of these committees, they are, the COG staff who work there, it's a large organization, and they have some incredible expertise, huge depth of expertise in these areas. And so you get a person like myself, who is, knows a little bit about a lot of things, and certainly not expert in any of things like climate, energy, and the environment. It's a steep learning curve, and sometimes the jargon and the abbreviations goes by real quick. It's a little hard to get a grip on some of it. But it is extraordinary, the Council of Governments is an extraordinary resource to all of us, and it's something that I think our new sustainability coordinator, when it, he, or she, whatever its gender might be, when it gets here, will be able to take advantage of. And I expect to continue to serve on this committee and to grow and develop my knowledge in this area. It's an exciting, it's very topical, because stuff like global warming is actually discussed in very pragmatic terms, and not some esoteric academic level, but in terms that relate to running our cities and trying to get our citizens to do things like energy savings and to adopt more smaller carbon footprints in the way we do things. So I'm not going to go on in those generalities, but I do appreciate the opportunity to get this stuff on the agenda. I hope we can do it more than once a year, maybe, you know, two or three times a year.
Yeah, we'll regularize it.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, I have my first meeting of the Air Quality Board on Wednesday, so maybe I'll start catching up to you, Brad. The second committee that I serve on is the Region Forward Coalition. And I'm just trying to play catch-up with some of the documents and plans for that group. But one of the things I note is that they have a whole comprehensive plan for metrics for the region, and they have a document, the same plan document is something that municipalities and the big regional governments have, or at least in theory, should have signed on to. And I didn't know if we had done that in the past. Do any of you who have served longer than me recollect whether we've formally had a motion?
I believe we did.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. So maybe I'll have more information at a future date after I've done more than just exchanged emails with the staff, but that's all I have for now.
Councilmember, let's see, no?
You know that already.
I didn't go.
Oh, okay. That was your light, yes. Councilmember Daniels.
Mine's not quite as exciting as everyone else's, as bold. But as you well know, mine's more community-oriented right now. I'm just getting my feet wet with COG, and I'm also part of the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department Board of Directors, yet I haven't gotten to a meeting. I'll get to the meeting in April, which is the third Wednesday. But I ran the election for the Tacoma Park, friends of the Tacoma Park, Maryland Public Library last week. I'm a hardcore friend. I'll be doing a poetry reading on April the 10th. I've attended as many Pine Crest Citizens Association meetings that I've been invited to, and I'm working with them on making some things happen over there. Of course, you all know, I was at the Art Hop, participated in this Tacoma Park activity, and I will be probably coming in last at the Safe Roadways 5K on May, because I'm not a runner there. I will be a walker. So I kind of, at this point, continue to stay, you know, with the city and, Dorothy, I can, for the junction, to bolster everyone's interest and involvement in a beautiful downtown Tacoma Park.
I'm going to just dance through a little list I got here.
Yeah, you've got a little list. Because I didn't want to follow you.
And I've got just a couple things that I'm going to mention about some of these. But first, I'll just go through. I've talked some, so I'm not going to give details on some of these first ones, but I'll just mention that I'm on the MML Board of Directors and Chair of the Legislative Committee, but I've talked about those things, and also the MML Montgomery Chapter President, and also President of the Mayor's Association. But I've talked about those things. The Local Government Advisory Committee on the Chesapeake Bay, there has been some interesting stuff lately, as we've gotten to the point where they're finalizing the watershed improvement processes and getting information on money. That's where I had gotten the information that I brought to the council about NIFWIF grants. And there was also some additional stuff that I sent to staff today that was some interesting. Now that it's getting to the point on cleaning up the bay, there's a lot more focus on how to go about some of these things and the money to get them. And that has gotten me on a lot of lists for getting the information. On the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department, I've been on that board for a number of years, and one of the things that came up recently was community use of the training center in the basement. And there was a request for the Art Hop. And in following up on that at the last board meeting, it turned out that the possibility for community use that they thought wasn't there without some change on permitting and those things, that there may be some real opportunities for that. So they're pursuing that to see whether that can be of more use to the public, rather than just to the fire department for training. At the Council of Governments, I'll just zip through what I do there and then mention a couple interesting items. I'm the longest-serving member of the Board of Directors at COG. I'm Chair of the Audit Committee, and I'm one of the seven members of the Executive Director Search Committee, as we look for a new executive director in the coming year, and that transition will take place January 1 of 2013. I'm also a longtime member of the National Capital Region Emergency Preparedness Council, and I've talked some about emergency preparedness here. I'm also the original and only Chair of the Institute for Regional Excellence Advisory Board, and we've had, I don't know, six or seven or eight city staff who have gone through that executive, that program. I always have the phrase right on the tip of my tongue.
I already do Institute for Regional Excellence.
Yeah, no, that. That I've got. But it's the only regional certified public manager program in the country. So that's essentially kind of equivalent of a master's degree for planning, and it's the way that people get to know their colleagues in other jurisdictions. I'm also on the Chesapeake Bay and Water Resources Policy Committee, and I've got some stuff here that I thought was particularly interesting. If anybody wants, I have three copies of a report by the Chesapeake Bay Foundation that is called Debunking the Job-Killer Myth: How Pollution Limits Encourage Jobs in the Chesapeake Bay Region. So if anybody wants one of those, I've got them. Also, we've been talking a little bit lately about the shift that the district is trying to do with their combined sewer overflow, where they're having to spend a huge amount of money to put in underground pipes, huge underground pipes, to deal with the combined sewer and stormwater overflow when you reach capacity after a storm and what dumps into the river. And they're trying to work with the federal government to change some of that, to bring some of the, how they're dealing with it, up onto the street to have a much more positive impact on the whole environment, rather than this huge infrastructure in big pipes underground that nobody ever sees. And one of the reasons that will have a direct effect on people in Tacoma Park is, I don't think a lot of people realize that the WSSC and the sewers, the sanitary sewers in Tacoma Park, empty into the system that goes to Blue Plains Treatment Plant in the district. And it's the largest sewage treatment plant in the world, and a huge amount of money has been put into it, and it's producing much cleaner water coming out than it did. So that what we pay in for our sewer fees to WSSC is going into that system. And I also have a chart here that looks at sewer rates in this metropolitan area. And the rates for WSSC back in 2000 were second highest in the region. They're now fifth highest out of the seven different systems that are here. And the average annual household cost for sewer service in WSSC in 2011 was just under $500. And I think I, oh, at the COG Board, some of the stuff that we've been talking about lately has been trying to make sure that there's dedicated metro funding. And that involves trying to get it, it devolves to, it's different in Virginia and Maryland and the district. The district always manages to come through with theirs because they make that decision, and it happens. In Virginia, it's all about whether the state is going to pay it, whether the localities are going to pay it. In Maryland, it's more the state that pays it. So it gets down to kind of intermural squabbles within the states about how it's going to happen and whether it happens. And there's been publicity lately about whether Loudon is going to want to pay for maintenance of Metro if Metro comes to Loudon, and how that will affect Silverline, and how all of that affects dedicated funding and the match from the federal government. So those types of issues come up, and that's just a flavor of some of the ones I deal with. So I think that completes all of our agenda items for this evening. We have an administrative function session upstairs, but this meeting is adjourned.